Thank you. So please may I welcome everyone to this meeting of council in the council chamber at Castle Hill Winchester. Welcome, especially to members of the public who have submitted questions for council. My name is councillor Angela Clear and I am deputy mayor and I will be chairperson for this meeting. Before we start the evening's business, I will now ask for nominations for a vice-chairperson for this meeting.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I would like to propose councillor Jane Rutter to act as deputy chairperson for the meeting.
Thank you, Leader. Is that seconded?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Are there any other nominations, please? I need to ask. No? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Then are all councillors in favour? If so, councillor Rutter, may I please ask you to join me? Thank you. Thank you. Now, the first item of business this evening are the minutes of the previous meetings of council. Members, the minutes of the extraordinary and the ordinary meetings of council held on the 5th of October 2022, which are set out on pages nine to 10, and 11 to 14 respectively of your agenda pack. May I sign these as a correct record?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. The next agenda item is disclosures of interest. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us this evening? Councillor Porter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to register my interest because I'm also a county councillor. I don't believe there's anything particular that comes on tonight's agenda, but just in case, I'm just registering that interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Warwick.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I need to register an interest as a county councillor, but also with reference to my particular role in the county councillor, and that relates to items under agenda, item 10, the motions, which are substantial county council business. So I will leave the meeting at item 10. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warwick. Councillor Todd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also a county councillor, although I believe that in this particular meeting is a personal and not a prejudicial interest and I have no need to leave the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Todd. I think that's it for declarations. Now, ladies and gentlemen, the next agenda item are announcements, and I have quite a few announcements this evening. And the first one is regarding former colleagues of Winchester City Council who have sadly passed away. Former councillor Peter Kent-Mason passed away in December. Mr Mason was elected to the council three times, from 1994 until 1998, 1999 until 2003, and then finally representing the Colden Common and Twyford Ward from 2008 until 2016. Mr Mason was also elected as a county councillor for Bishopswortham in 2001, until his retirement in 2013, and also served for more than 11 years as a member of Hampshire's Police Authority. Former councillor and mayor of Winchester, Ian Bidgood, died peacefully on the 3rd of January aged 92. Mr Bidgood was mayor of Winchester 1981 to 1982, and was elected to represent the Ozzelbury and Colden Common Ward in 1976, and following changes in ward boundaries to the Colden Common and Twyford Ward from 2002 until his retirement in 2006. Mr Bidgood was appointed to a number of committees and notably chaired the former Winchester District Local Plan Committee for several years. Mr Bidgood's family have been in touch regarding funeral arrangements, and this is to take place in Yeovil on Friday the 10th of February at 11:20. Please contact the mayor's secretary for further information if you require, and the family have also made arrangements for the memorial service to be livestreamed. Former councillor and mayor of Winchester and leader of the council, Alan Mitchell, also passed away on the 3rd of January. Mr Mitchell had more than 30 years' service as a member of the council. He was first elected in 1971 and then again in 1973, representing the St Paul's Ward and then St Barnabas from 1976 until 1979, and again from 1986 until 2006. He was re-elected again in 2008 before retiring in 2012. Alan was mayor of Winchester 1999 to 2000 and was leader of the council from 1994. Mr Mitchell had been living in Cardiff, close to his family, and his funeral will take place there. But a memorial service has also been arranged on Friday the 10th of February at 12:30 at Wesley Methodist Church in Wique. And again, please contact the mayor's secretary for further details. So councillors, please may I ask that we now stand in silent tribute to their memory. Thank you. Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, members, may I please announce forthcoming charity events. On Thursday the 9th of February at 7:30, it is the annual quiz night, which this year will take place at Winchester Rugby Club, and once again is to be hosted by TV's Egghead, Kevin Ashman, and teams of up to six people can take part, and tickets are now on sale with Eventbrite. On Sunday the 5th of March, it will be Pie and Mash Luncheon at Abbey House, supported once again by Pie Caramamba, which always makes me want to do this, but I'd better not, at Winchester. And thank you. May I thank Mike Janet Reid for assisting with the arrangements, and tickets will also be available on Eventbrite. I am now delighted to announce that it is with great pleasure that I formally launched the annual Mayor of Winchester's Community Awards for 2023. The community awards recognise and celebrate the organisations and individuals who have given outstanding service to the people of the Winchester district. The closing date for nominations is the 24th of February, and should you wish to discuss your nomination or any aspect of the awards, please once again contact the mayor's secretary. And over the next few weeks, arrangements for an awards ceremony event will be decided, which is to be held in March on a date to be confirmed. Finally, this evening, I am very pleased to announce that regard to the King's New Year honours, I have written to the following recipients. Dr Martin Reed, CBE of Bishopswortham, a knighthood for services to industry and for public and voluntary service. Dr Reed is chairman of Wincanton PLC. Claire Hobbs of Winchester, an OBE for her work with young people as founder of the Wessex Dance Academy. John Coolcut of Sutton Scotney, an OBE for services to charity and philanthropy. Jordan Wiley, lately of Andover but now living in Winchester, an MBE for services to children's education in the Horn of Africa. John Sutton of Winchester, MBE for services to charitable fundraising as director of amateur choirs. Professor Beverley Harden, visiting professor at the University of Winchester, an MBE for services to healthcare, and I'm sure you will agree with me, congratulations to them all. And one last announcement, Lisa Kirkman, our strategic director, is leaving us at the end of the month, and I know that members have valued her practical advice and help whenever we have asked for it, and I would like to take this moment to wish her well and accord that the best thanks of the council be recorded in the minutes. Now, Mr Mace Bear, I thank you so much, sir, for accompanying me this evening, and thank you. Leader, do you have any announcements, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do have a few things to announce and report to fellow members. As discussed at previous meetings, I've continued our programme of meeting the leaders and chief executives of neighbouring authorities. Since we last met at full council, I've met the leaders of Test Valley and of Eastleigh, councillor Phil North and councillor Keith House. Some of our common issues will come as no surprise, the phosphates and nitrates issue, the way forward on the partnership for South Hampshire statement of common ground, and in the case of Test Valley, the experience of the experience of being a mid-Hampshire authority that economically looks both north and south and the importance of rural economy issues. One striking factor is that they are both taking interesting initiatives to give local members more power over what happens in their local areas, pushing decisions down to area committees, wards and individual members. Their solutions are different, they're not necessarily something we can lift and bring over to our area. But I've asked councillor Becker to look at their ideas as we continue to seek ways, new ways to use the knowledge, insight and local understanding of ward members to drive the council's work. Another common factor with Test Valley is our membership of the EM3 Local Enterprise Partnership, or LEP. For your awareness, I've been chosen by other council leaders in Surrey and Hampshire to be one of the local authority members of the LEP board and I'm particularly delighted that the person who ran the election and I think even chose to vote for me, councillor Rob Humby, the leader of Hampshire County Council, is here in the public gallery this evening. He is actually, if there's one council leader I've met more than any other, and it is genuinely the one I've met more than any other, it is councillor Humby. He has a very strong commitment through the new regeneration and growth committees that are being set up around the county to partnership with the districts. And although we don't agree on everything politically, the one thing that goes without question is that we are each totally committed to seeing our county and our district thrive and I'm very grateful, appreciate the fact that he's there this evening and appreciate the spirit of cooperation that he works with leaders of other councils, even if they may not be from the same political party. One shared agenda that we also have with Test Valley is to ensure that the Local Enterprise Partnership works on relevant rural economy initiatives. And I had the opportunity to see the results of some of the LEP's work in this area when the Princess Royal opened the Animal Health and Welfare Research Centre at Sparschult in November. Strengthening our district's research footprint is an engine for high-quality jobs in our district and so this initiative is very welcome. One area where I know members have great interest is the Partnership for South Hampshire, particularly development of the so-called Statement of Common Ground. The main topic of the last board meeting, which came only a few days after the Secretary of State announced his proposed changes to the National Planning Policy Framework, or NPPF, was a review of progress on the Statement of Common Ground to date as well as the impact of the Secretary of State's announcements. The advance of the leader of Faram and Chair of Partnership for South Hampshire, councillor Sean Woodward at the time, was that we cannot yet assume that it will have a significant material impact on our decision-making. However, we are having another meeting on January the thirtieth to focus on planning issues, to discuss this further and I will report back. I also promised you that I would make a point of getting out into the district to understand local issues. I particularly valued visits to North Whitley, Newlands Parish Council, covering the Winchester district part of Otterlooville, Wickham, Bishopswortham and Alsford. And where I've been meeting outside stakeholders, I've particularly appreciated the input and insight of local members of all parties to help ensure that those discussions are productive. It's also been a period where partnership working has, more broadly, has played a critical role. At the last meeting, I highlighted councillor Ferguson's work in developing a cost-of-living programme for the council to support local residents. During, since the last meeting, this led to an extremely helpful and productive cost-of-living summit and a cost-of-living briefing with parishes. The cost-of-living remains a high priority for this administration and the support and collaboration of our partners is critical in making the biggest difference possible. Finally, I would like to thank officers for going above and beyond in their response to issues over Christmas. As you know, there were issues with Southern Water and their supply of water to houses and businesses in the south of our district. And our colleagues in the housing hub were also asked to be available over the Christmas period as part of the plan to fix the problems associated with our housing out-of-hours call centre. I know that nobody here will be at all surprised in the way that officers stepped up on both occasions and took time out of their holidays to ensure a strong response to both issues. But it is not something that we should ever take for granted and so I would like to thank them for their work. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Chief Executive, do you have any announcements, please?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I have apologies this evening, members, and they have been received from Mr Mayor and councillors Bronk, Lumby and McLean. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much, thank you. The next agenda item is item four, questions from members of the public and welcome once again to Mr David Colleen, who is here this evening and has submitted a question for council to answer. All members have a copy of the question received, which has also been circulated electronically and printed copies are also available in the public seating area. Please may I now call upon David Colleen to ask his question. Good evening, Mr Colleen, nice to see you. And could you address the meeting using the microphone, sir? And a reminder that, following the response given by the member, you may also ask a supplementary question which must arise directly out of the original question or the reply. So, thank you, sir. Over to you.
Good evening, Madam Deputy Mayor, councillors and officers. And Happy New Year to everybody who have not seen so far. My question is, the Secretary of State for Levelling Up Housing and Communities, Michael Grove MP, has announced his intention to make several changes to the planning regulations, including housing targets. Will Winchester City Council pause their local plan process, including announcements for building on greenfield sites across Winchester district, until these changes become clearer in the legislation?
Thank you so much, Mr Colleen. Councillor Porter, please, could you respond? Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Mr Colleen and I have talked about this later to Conservative MPs and then in a written ministerial statement on the sixth of December twenty twenty-two, that the current housing targets should be an advisory starting point, a guide that is not mandatory, and promised to consult on changes to bring this into effect in an upcoming national policy framework consultation. And that has now gone out and it's open until eleven forty-five PM on the second of March. However, he did make it very clear that they were still aiming for three hundred thousand homes per year by the middle of the twenty twenties. The public consultation on these and the proposed change in the NPAPF framework runs from the twenty-second of December and we will be making a response from Winchester City Council. The government has made it very clear in this public consultation that the standard method for assessing housing need remains the clear starting point for the plan-making process. The government isn't proposing any specific changes to the standard formula itself, but through the public consultation is looking at using the twenty-twenty-one census figures, but they will not be published until twenty twenty-four. Local authorities will be expected to continue to use the figures for local housing need that we've been given, assessed through the standard method, to inform the preparation of their plans. Although the ability to use an alternative method, where there are exceptional circumstances that can be justified, will be retained. As part of the public consultation, the government is seeking views on demographic and geographic factors that can be used to demonstrate these exceptional circumstances in practice. And I'm sure you're aware, but to clarify for others as well, in addition, they list three specific exceptional circumstances listed which might enable adjustment of those planned housing numbers. One, if housing need can only be met by building at densities which should be significantly out of character of the whole area. Two, if it requires an alteration to green belt boundaries, they don't want people to reduce their green belts. And three, if there's been a significant over-delivery in an authority's area in the recent past. These don't appear to be directly applicable to our local situation, although number three is, I think, applicable. Although they would be combined with the levelling up bill's planned removal of the duty to cooperate, which may reduce the risk of required to build more houses than we need to meet the surplus housing demand in the Push area. As you know, they've got the C that bounds them, so they are quite limited in the place that they can put their housing. But this would give them a justified need, justified reason to reduce their numbers. In your written reply, there's also the link, which I'm sure you've got already. Both the Winchester Movement Strategy and the proposed changes to the NPAPF are an expression of government policy and therefore capable of being a material consideration in the determination of planning applications and local plan examinations. However, the proposed changes that are outlined above are only just being consulted on, but they are not immediate changes to government policy, although it does relate in many cases to spring twenty twenty-three, but the consultation doesn't finish until the end of spring twenty twenty-three. This means that until further details are provided in the form of an updated NPPPF, there is no robust legal justification to alter our current housing requirement that was consulted on in the draft Reg eighteen local plan. And that would mean risking having an unsound plan and losing control of the planning process. The NPPPF continues to press local authorities to continue with plans they're making. It clearly states that the best way to secure more high-quality homes in the right places is through the adoption of local plans. So the city council will of course be responding to the public consultation, but given the numerous amount of changes in the plan-making process over recent months and really we're seeking that clarity in law, it's in the best interest of our communities that we continue to prepare a local plan that provides a wealth of housing, employment, breathing space and exemplary climate-conscious policies as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, Councillor Porter. Mr Colleen, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Councillor Porter. And you may have answered most of this during that very comprehensive response, but I'll ask it anyway because it has a slightly different slant, I think. Following the recent announcements from Michael Grove MP, making it clear that the local housing need figure generated through the standard method formula will only be an advisory starting point and that it will be up to local authorities, working within their communities to determine how many new homes need to be built, how does Winchester aim to comply with this new direction?
Thank you. Councillor Porter, if you wish to respond, please.
Yeah, I think I broadly responded already. A lot of, there is of course the the whole conversation about densities and design codes and local neighbourhood plans in the NPPPF consultation. And that will be a really important part of the decision of how many houses we can build because it talks about gentle densities, I'm not quite sure what a gentle density is, but it is talking about making sure that the homes that you build are in character to the surrounding areas and that could vary the number slightly. Our planning officers have been excellent in already planning for that over-delivery through the windfall numbers. That's not been previously done before, but it has been included in our plans this time. And I'm really grateful to them for having the forward thinking of that because it actually puts it into this context of this local plan. The other point is that the the standard method, they recognise that it's rather a blunt instrument in the paper. I'm hoping that we'll see more about that in the next year or so. We are aiming to get something out to Reg nineteen by twenty twenty-three, at the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We know now that there are other constraints on us and these changes may well affect that. But I certainly think that we will have to keep our eye on it, but meanwhile, we need to continue with the plan-making process. It's very clear in this guidance that that's what we should do. So we will be reviewing it on a long-term basis, but for the moment, we stick to the number we've got.
Thank you, Councillor Porter, and thank you so much, Mr Colleen, for your question. Please may I remind you that your question and the answer will be published on the council's website in due course. Mr Colleen, you are of course very welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting and you are invited to be seated in the public gallery if you would like to and an officer will assist you, sir. Thank you. Agenda item five is regarding consideration and determination of the recommended minutes of cabinet held on the fourteenth of December twenty twenty-two. Mr MacArthur, would you please introduce? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Agenda item five is the recommended minute of cabinet on the fourteenth of December twenty twenty-two, regarding the council plan twenty twenty to twenty-five refresh. A report CAB three three seven oh refers and that report appears at pages seventeen to fifty-eight of the papers. An extract of the draft minute of the meeting of the cabinet appears at page fifteen and the recommendations for council are set out on that page and also on page five of the agenda pack. Thank you.
Leader, would you move the recommended minute of cabinet, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Back in twenty nineteen, this administration laid out an ambitious and clear plan for this council and our district, outlining five priorities. Tackling the climate emergency and creating a greener district, making sure we have homes for all, ensuring a vibrant local economy, supporting our residents in living well and through your services, your voice, ensuring that we have high-quality services that reflect our residents' priorities. I am very grateful for the work that our former leader, councillor Thompson and her cabinet colleagues did to drive ahead on these priorities from twenty nineteen, despite the challenges of the pandemic and more recently, despite the economic uncertainty that our area has faced. Cutting carbon, increasing recycling, setting the highest possible standards for our draft local plan, installing solar panels and EV charging points, successfully launching the sport and leisure park and refurbishing Meadowside, supporting refugees and asylum seekers, building new homes, helping businesses through the pandemic, developing a new green economic development strategy, opening up council decision-making, winning awards for our local plan consultation and cutting the number of missed bins. But we are also an administration that learns from its successes and failures and seeks to improve in everything we do. And so this is now the second time that we have come back with a revised plan that builds on what we have learned and the new and emerging challenges that we face. The views of our residents are particularly important and this latest revision reflects on what we have learnt from them, both in our performance and in their support for our priorities. And because of that, the core priorities remain unchanged. However, we've identified four areas that we want to give greater focus. We are currently facing economic uncertainty and rising prices at levels not seen since the early nineteen nineties. This is badly affecting many local people, particularly those whose financial position is most stretched, along with local businesses and the council itself. And so we will continue the programme we have already started of supporting people with the cost of living. Climate change is hitting us harder sooner than expected. Even here in this district, with flash flooding, extreme temperatures and water shortages affecting our health, our homes and businesses, chalk streams and rivers and the unique countryside that makes our district so special, we have to go greener faster and this plan sets out how. The Winchester district is also a special place that I know we all deeply care about, but we cannot be complacent. Expectations from local residents are rightly high. We have been facing higher levels of antisocial behaviour and vandalism. So we will be investing in our public space and working hard with partners to deliver the pride in place that our city and district deserve. Finally, we can't do this on our own. The council performs best when it recognises and listens to the diverse interests, needs and wishes of different people in our community. We need to listen better and work alongside the people and businesses and other organisations of the Winchester district in tackling the challenges we face. Alongside the plan laid out in the document before you tonight, we are also putting forward a focused list of KPIs so that our performance and progress is driven ahead but is also transparent and visible. Madam Deputy Mayor, this administration remains ambitious for what the council can achieve and what we can deliver for our residents and our district. We have been careful to put the council on a sound financial footing, but new economic pressures mean that we will still face hard choices. Although the plan runs until twenty twenty-five, we will continue to listen and adjust over its lifetime. The plan before you tonight lays out how we will make these choices, reflects the input that residents have given us and deliver against our priorities and make a real difference to the lives of our residents, the strengths of our businesses and the quality of our environment. Council, I ask you all to please endorse this plan. Council, I ask you all to please endorse this plan tonight.
Thank you, Leader. Do you have a seconder, please?
I do. Councillor Ferguson, the deputy leader.
Councillor Ferguson, do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Right, councillors, questions? Any questions, please? Councillor Brooke, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask the Leader, please, what discussions took place with anybody outside of the Cabinet in the production of this plan for the council?
As you know, this plan does not arrive here directly from nowhere. It has come via Cabinet, where members had the opportunity, and indeed, some members took the opportunity to come forward and express their views on the plan here tonight. And of course, in its development and in the ongoing work of the council, we are always listening to members in terms of discussion of priorities and things that they think should be done better.
Councillor Weston, thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Leader, I was really impressed by your speech there about wanting to make sure that we're going to protect our unique countrysides and deal with the flash floods, and we've got to cope with all these things. Leader, what are you doing about it? What are we doing about it? I mean, what's happening to the people that are burning all the rubbish? And yet the council doesn't come out and check on it? You know, our countryside, actually, if you come out to the countryside, Leader, have you been out there to see what's happening to it with all the flash floods we're having, the poor drainage, and also all the pollution that's going in on the air? We keep reporting and nothing happens.
Leader.
Thank you very much. I outlined in my introductory announcements a whole series of meetings that I've been having around the district. And as you know, and as I've made repeatedly clear in the past, if there's anything you wish me to come and have a look at, if you wish to come and discuss issues in your ward, I will be more than happy to do so. If there are any issues where you're reporting problems and not getting a response, you haven't emailed me about any of those topics to date, but if you choose to do so, I will be more than happy to work with you to tackle the issues that you believe need more attention.
Any more questions, councillors? No, thank you. Then I will go straight into debate, please. So, debate, anyone? Councillor Brooke, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak on this item. I'm disappointed that this plan's been created without any discussion with fellow members around the district. We spoke at the last council meeting of greater collaboration, and in the production of this document, that seems to have either been forgotten or ignored. As a Conservative group, we would have welcomed an open discussion regarding shaping a plan for the district. Instead, we have the plan in front of us that hasn't been discussed with members. The Leader just said that members could have gone along and spoken to him about it, but no email or invite was forthcoming to invite us to that. The plan in front of us is littered with contradictions, including under-vibrant local economy, saying one of the things you want to achieve is new and renovated workspaces, when in the draft local plan, it clearly states that no new offices are needed within the district. Another being wanting our city market towns and rural areas to have a distinct and competitive offering, but not supporting things such as self-build in an affordable way through the local plan. Saying your service, your voice, and offering to involve public and businesses and stakeholders earlier in the decision-making, and yet choosing to not even consult residents over River Park and in fact completely ignoring their voice. No discussions on this document in which you say specifically you will speak to stakeholders more. The Leader said we can't do this alone, speaking about listening, but where is our voice in this as the rest of the members? Where is the voice of the public? Where is the voice of the district? This is once again a generically aspirational document with lots of ideals and no view as to whether it aligns to others' ideas. It's a real missed opportunity, and I hope things change going forwards. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Thompson, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. Members, I'm very pleased to support the refresh of our council plan. So much has changed since the last refresh. We've moved out of the pandemic years and all the restrictions that were needed. We've even moved on from our full recovery plans, where we looked forward to encouraging our residents and visitors to return once more to the high streets across the district, and businesses were able to open their doors to the public again. And it's been really exciting for all of us to see how busy our high streets were this summer and in the autumn, and enjoying the events leading up to Christmas and the New Year. But just as we've been enjoying the newly-found normality and freedom, little did we know that we will be heading into an economic crisis that would completely change the landscape yet again. The cost-of-living crisis with its soaring heating bills, rapidly rising inflation, and rocketing prices has shaken us all. And it is hitting our businesses particularly hard as they are faced with a double whammy of, on the one hand, rising fuel costs and a difficult recruitment environment, whilst seeing fewer customers coming through their doors. So this is absolutely the right time to be looking at our priorities and tailoring them to ensure that we continue to support our residents and businesses in the best way possible through this extraordinarily difficult time. So how are we helping our businesses and what changes have we made? Going greener faster isn't just a slogan, but an imperative. And help and advice with reducing carbon was one of the top priorities that our businesses requested. It has become very clear over the past few months that our reliance on fossil fuels to heat our premises and power our vehicles has to change. But we are really fortunate in that we already have our green economic development strategy, which now has a two-year action plan, and we are well on our way to implementing those actions. For example, we have employed a business growth officer who has joined the team to drive this forward. And as you will see in the questions later in the agenda, we have commissioned Meerkat Associates to offer one-to-one consultations to assist businesses in producing net-zero strategies. And I know we have helped a number of businesses through that process. Members will be aware, we've been awarded 1.7 million via the UK Shared Prosperity Fund and the Rural England Fund, and we will be using these funds to support our priorities and projects that help foster a vibrant economy, helping our businesses go greener faster and inspiring pride in place. It's really important that our high streets across the district continue to be attractive and welcoming places for people to work and where visitors and residents are encouraged to visit. Last year, I visited our market towns and larger settlements to find out how these funds might be used to help, and a number of great ideas were discussed. And in the next few weeks, now that the fund has been confirmed by government, we will be calling out for those projects to come forward. So the allocation of this money is very welcome and will help us achieve some of the key priority areas of our council plan and help towards the objectives of GEDs. We are producing a sustainable tourism strategy and have already taken the scoping plan to Business and Housing Policy Committee. And we have our first stakeholder meeting arranged to discuss the way forward in producing a new cultural strategy. So having the priorities in the council plan honed and tightened once more in the light of the current circumstances really helps us to deliver what our businesses want, ensuring they are resilient, not only for their own benefit, but that of our town and market towns across the district. I hope you will support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Clemmerson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm a bit torn on this item because generally, there's little to contradict about what you want to do for the people of our district. However, I do have a major concern about the greener, faster agenda, and I would like to see the brakes applied, with more consideration being given to this plan. A greener future means renewable energy. We all agree that. But as you said, things have changed over the last few years, and so much more is now being known about greener energy. When asked why lithium is so important for renewable energy, the CEO of Energy X, Tegan Egan, stated on the 14th of July 22, "Without lithium, the efficiency and ability to implement renewable energy will be limited. As such, the element is critical to the development of low-carbon power opportunities across the world and will dictate how fast the global transition can happen, especially for nations with higher intermittency, increasing energy needs, or demand for self-reliance. Lithium-ion batteries for energy storage provide the perfect solution to maximise the use of solar, wind, and tidal energy and dependency on fossil fuels. The shift to renewable power can only be successful with the use of lithium." However, lithium in battery storage facilities or even electric vehicles is proving to be a major safety risk, and we are also becoming aware of the excessive carbon footprint associated with the mining of lithium, production of batteries, and also the disposal of this element. Little has been spoken about or debated relating to the Carnegie Road 20-megawatt battery energy storage system, the project on Merseyside, and the fire on the 15th of September 2020. A battery storage facility go. This 20-megawatt storage facility was quite small, yet it served to highlight the extremely unpredictable properties of lithium, such as thermal runaway, and the lack of understanding of, for example, fire crews called to deal with the explosions, the fire, and the toxic gases, including the deadly hydrochloric acid produced when lithium and water connect. I do not believe that the implications of the use of lithium as a holy grail of renewable energy has been sufficiently considered following the COP26 as the world rushed to combat the perceived climate emergency. And I am truly concerned that this council is so committed to the green agenda and the net-zero targets, it has set itself that safety is truly being ignored. And it could be a very dangerous future by reliability on lithium. And I would ask people to reconsider this plan and think about what the implications could be of putting your eggs in the lithium basket. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Clemmerson. Councillor Chippik Cooper, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to see this plan and congratulate the team on it. Particularly happy to see at the front page, the first priority, front and centre, is the climate emergency, and the council's plan to tackle that. It is the most important challenge that faces us as a council, as a district, as a country, as a world. So it's very, very important that is front and centre. I think I just wanted to make a comment about the consultation to create this paper, and of course, it comes from all the work the council does. In particular, the committee I sit on, the Health and Environment Policy Committee, now a deputy member. I can see the debates, the comments, the work that goes on in that committee, for example, throughout this paper and the sort of priorities that are within it. That committee has members from both sides that give very valuable, very, very good contributions. So that's clearly a key source of consultation that's led to this paper. Indeed, the whole spectrum of the work the council does in committee and group forums, it constitutes the consultation that goes into this. Further specific example, obviously very close to my heart, is the work achieved with Winchester City of Sanctuary and the support we've been given to the Ukrainian refugees that have arrived in our district. A huge, huge gratitude and commendation to the council officers for the work they do in engaging not just the individual Ukrainians, but also the hosts that arrive. That is a constant, ongoing engagement, and it just shows how important it is to this council that the people that are affected by the decisions are consulted about them. So it's a contrary comment to councillor Brooke, but just to commend that element of this plan, which is absolutely excellent. Again, fantastic, the climate change is the front page of it.
Thank you, councillor Chippik Cooper. Councillor Reech, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I feel moved just to address some of the issues that were raised about lithium. I do remember my GCSE chemistry, and lithium is not something particularly fearful of. It's an alkali earth metal. When it catches fire and reacts with water, it makes lithium hydroxide, not hydrochloric acid. It's a very abundant element. The production and the mining of lithium is a very dirty process. Of course it is, and we need to try and make sure that we make that cleaner, faster. But lithium is critical, and if we don't move to electric vehicles, if we don't move to battery storage, we're burning more oil, we're burning more gas, and we're using more nuclear. Those three things are far, far dirtier. And I must put on record, some of those pseudo-scientific claims were made were both dangerous and incorrect.
Thank you, councillor Reech. I think I've got councillor Scotch.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The themes, I've got no problem with the priority themes of this plan. It covers most of the logical themes that we need as a council to tackle. Climate emergency is mentioned by a colleague across the chamber. I do give heart to the Leader tonight saying that we have to recognise what our residents and quite a large element of our residents in our old council estates are going through at this moment in time. The cost-of-living crisis that some of them are facing is something we've probably never experienced before as members, especially with quite a lot of casework that we are entering into. The heat-or-eat scenario that we come across quite a lot and this time of year when we get damp and mold properties because some of the residents just cannot afford to put the heating on, which causes damp and mould. And so quite often, the aspirations of the council is clearly good and needs to be in a framework, and there's a logic to this framework here. But reference to what we need to do as a council to recognise that some of the specialist officers that we have in the council is what we need to address some of the stuff. The government comes out with deprivation figures on some of our estates, Stammel, Winall, Highcliff, probably Wickham as well, comes under the deprivation figures. The old priorities that we used to have, the old council state priorities we used to have as a chamber, they're still there. So we still have sort of low job attainment, sort of employment there for some of our residents. Health issues is a factor there. Low attendance of people going on to further education, and just lack of opportunities per se, that the deprivation figures are there. They're there, quite clear for us to swallow and digest. So moving forward, the framework and the themes, I've got no problem with. But I just want to give sort of a thank you to the officers because quite often, whatever the Cabinet or council comes up with, it is quite often led through the officers and their ingenuousness, their will and enthusiasm and a motivation to come alongside us and our residents to achieve an awful lot of what's here in front of us in this plan and for the next year or two, or whatever the plan goes up to, 25 as mentioned. And so I think we need to sort of remember some of our officers. And so I think we need to sort of remember some of our offices, probably as councillor Todd, the leader, has mentioned over Christmas, have given extra again to the council and all the sort of the things that sort of come their way, emergencies and so forth like that. We have an emergency at this moment in time in some of the nation and some of our estates and the way that some of our residents are suffering and I'm very pleased that the leader's referenced that tonight in his opening to this section and I do thank fellow members to be on it as well with their casework as well because I've never seen such, in all my years as community development worker, the need is great out there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Scott. I will now ask then councillor Ferguson, a secondor, if you would like to speak now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and I'd like to thank everybody for the comments and some of the points that have been raised. The one thing I wanted to say was the council plan we see before us is a council plan refresh. So there has been considerable debate on the council plan since it was first brought forward in twenty twenty. This in fact is the second refresh, which means that we are constantly looking to see what we can do to improve our plans and our actions to support people as circumstances change. I've listened to some of the comments and to some of the debates and I'd like to thank members for their positive comments, but again I would like to address a couple of issues. The issue of collaboration on this plan, I think councillor Tippett Cooper pointed to something that I was going to say. The council plan isn't something that sits on a shelf, the five priorities appear in every single paper, every single policy paper, everything, single scoping paper, they're always there. And in fact, whenever we meet in committees, we do in fact debate the paper around the key priorities. So there is a constant feedback loop from members when we're looking at the plan and that helps partially to drive the refresh. We also of course do the resident survey and we ask them to look again at the priorities, which they do. And in the recent survey, it's clear that they felt the priorities were pretty, though they were still right, they were still relevant, there was still support for those. And I was pleased to see that this time when we consulted on the resident survey, we specifically went out to get the views of young people and they again gave us their feedback. Now, some of the corporate priorities that are now overlaying the five priorities, those which are the cost of living crisis, the greener faster, the pride in place and the listening better, they came through that consultation. What we heard was that people wanted us to go faster on our green agenda, they supported it, but they wanted us to do more. So there is that listening, there is the collaboration, but it's ongoing. The other thing I would say as well about this plan is it very much drives what the council does. So it is at a strategic level, but then it drives down through the organisations into service plans. So it then, through that work, seeks to address some of the very issues that councillor Scott spoke about. He spoke about, we talk about, the cost of living crisis, but then the reality for individual residents is their lives are particularly difficult right now and they're often our most vulnerable. So when we say we've got to focus on the cost of living crisis, that drives down into plans which look at tendency sustainment, that look at welfare support, that look at direct action. And where, as you'll see from an answer to councillor Evans' question, on our cost of living package response, we talk about even more direct action, actually working with fair share to provide emergency food in the most desperate situations and then looking to provide more sustainable support. So this council plan does drive down from a strategic level all the way down through the service plans to make a real impact for our residents. I think I've probably said enough, otherwise I'll be stealing the leader's thunder, but I would very much like to commend this minute to the chamber and I'd ask all members to support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Leader, do you wish to sum up please?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Members, I confess to being slightly disappointed by the response of the opposition today. We've put forward a positive thought-through plan and in return, we've had some complaints about process, but no ideas, no suggestions, no improvements. That said, we're always open for discussion as an administration about how we can do a better job as a council, but I would like it to be about positive ideas. And as a step towards this, there's a positive idea, a listening better idea, that I'm more than happy to offer to the opposition. It's unashamedly stolen from councillor Humby, who alongside his deputy leader, had a very positive and productive meeting with members of the opposition Liberal Democrat group at the county council last Friday to discuss how the county council can improve. I've confirmed with councillor Ferguson that she and I are happy to have the same discussion with the Conservative group here to discuss how the city council can improve, as well as meetings with the independents and Green Party members. Now, this doesn't replace the vital work of the policy committees, the work they do in strengthening, improving our plans and influencing what we have in front of us tonight, or the scrutiny committee of course. And we've been having discussions within our group as to how the committees work better, can work better, and I'm very happy to meet councillor Brook to discuss with her how the administration and the scrutiny committee can work better together and ensure that the different viewpoints and skills and insights that different members of the council bring to our, can bring to our policy work are reflected in our future work. But I don't want this to hold up the plan that we're asking you to agree today. It sets forward a clear and positive vision of what I think we need to be doing as a council and in our district. The priorities it highlights are urgent and important, the recommendation is clear, the plan is positive, I would ask the council to vote for it now and support it tonight. Thank you very much indeed, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. So please now may I put to the vote the recommended minute of Cabinet on page two of the Agenda Pack. Please, may I see a show of hands, all those in favour? All those against? Any members wishing to abstain? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the recommended minute cabinet is agreed. Thank you. We now move on to Agenda Item Six regarding the report and recommendations of the independent members' remuneration panel. Mr MacArthur, would you please introduce? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Agenda Item Six is the Report and Recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel. Report CL one six four refers and the panel's detailed report appears as an appendix to that report and can be found on pages fifty-nine to one hundred and ten of the meeting papers. The recommendations for council are set out on pages two and three of the Agenda Pack and in the report on pages fifty-nine to sixty-one.
Thank you so much. Leader, would you move the recommendation in the report please and do you have a secondor? May I ask now?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd actually like to recommend an alternative members' allowance scheme. Earlier this afternoon, members re emailed a revised proposal, which everyone should also, I think, have in front of them as a printed copy. This is a revision to the proposal put forward by the independent review panel, following discussions within groups and between group leaders and I'm pleased to confirm that councillor Horrell will be seconding this revised proposal. I know we all acknowledge and appreciate the work the independent review panels have done, particularly in their careful benchmarking and in highlighting the so-called public service discount assumed in our allowances scheme, but in accordance with Recommendation Two, found on page sixty-one of the published Agenda Pack, I would ask that this proposed alternative scheme be tabled as the substantive motion and therefore, once seconded, be debated upon and taken to the vote.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Horrell, do you wish your, reserve your right to speak?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, yes I do, thank you.
Thank you then, I will go in.
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, apologies, that was a sort of procedural break in my introductory, introductory speech. I'd like to quickly, although this has been widely discussed within groups, I'd like to quickly outline why this revised proposal is in front of you this evening. After discussions within our council groups and between myself and the leader of the opposition, I think we've all concluded that at this time of cost of living pressure, it is only fair and right that councillors are treated in the same way as council officers. Even though the benchmarking was carefully calculated, the original proposals would have required us to go further than the increases planned for council staff and so we didn't feel it was correct to make the full adjustment at the current time. In deciding this revised, the appropriate figure, this revised recommendation takes into account the flat rate increase recommended for council officers this year by the NJC Local Government Award and the local so-called scale point increase proposed to come into effect in April. This means a one hundred and seventy-four pound increase in our basic allowance versus current levels and an adjustment to the SRA multiplier so that there is no significant change in special responsibility allowances at the current time, although they will remain linked to any inflationary increase in allowances in the future. One of the reasons I wanted this alternative proposal to lay out the basis for calculating our allowances was to highlight the hours that many members put in and the way that our desire, the desire that we all share to serve the public is reflected in a so-called public service discount versus the median wage in our area. I know from personal experience how serving the public as a councillor can have an impact on our work, our relationships and our free time or lack of it, but that is not something I would want you to think that I would ever take for granted. But I also know that we value and respect the work of officers we work alongside and would not be comfortable if we were receiving favourable treatment compared to them in these difficult times. As stated earlier, I'm very grateful for the work of the independent review panel and particularly their thoughts on the need for other forms of support to ensure that those with caring or parental responsibilities can also participate as councillors. I'm also grateful for all members who have had a part in discussion and input into this alternative scheme. I think the scheme we have in front of us is both fair and appropriate and I would ask you to support it.
Thank you, Leader. Sorry, I jumped in too soon, thank you. Right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions please? No, then we will go straight into debate, thank you. Councillor Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. One of the interesting factors when we serve as councillors, we get sort of tarnished with being in sort of caught up in like the MPs salary discussion and a lot of, I don't know if fellow members recognise this, but quite a lot of residents think we're loaded and we think that we're actually on this sort of eighty-five thousand pounds salary plus and sometimes when you actually sometimes remind the members of public we serve that we have an allowance roughly around about six grand, they say, well, why do you do that for? And so quite often it's quite a rain check when sometimes an independent body comes up with the formula and recognise that we should be in line with the officers, but actually it's a good opportunity to remind the public that we are really are servants of our communities' elected members, but we're nowhere near the salaries of the MPs in Westminster and I think if this does get through, people will need to understand from a good comms point of view what we're about. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor Scott. Councillor Wallace, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Whilst I can't disagree with the recommendation that's come forward from the council, they have limited powers on what we can do, there is a real concern here. One of the points that got raised in the questions to councillors was how many hours do we do? And the average was about thirty hours per week. The other council mentioned we're getting about six and a half, we get paid about six and a half thousand pounds for thirty hours work a week. Now, we all took on the role knowing this, but my concern is that it does, the accessibility of this to the wider, wider community. The average age of councillors across the South East is, I believe, sixty-seven. That doesn't sound very representative to me and the pay is one of the reasons why we have such a high average age. Now, I know this is way beyond what we can achieve here, but I think it is a point that is worth noting and I just wanted to make it.
Thank you councillor Wallace. Any more for debate please? No, thank you. Leader, do you wish to, oh councillor Horrell, I do sincerely apologise, yes, would you like to speak now a secondor? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm grateful as the leader to the independent review panel for their efforts and guidance, even though we're minded not to accept their recommendation in full. Councillor Todd and I have discussed this recommendation at some length and support the amended scheme before you and we have discussed this within our respective groups and I hope you all agree the key principle on which we want to move forward and that is to continue to link our allowance increase to that of the staff of the council. We're also embracing two additional recommendations though from the panel regarding carers and parental leave to make us more attuned to modern life and actually help with that responsibility that some of the councillors may have. I hope you agree that this is a fair recommendation and one that we have again committed to review in four years, so it is set for that particular period. Madam Deputy Mayor, I think this is something that we should agree as a council and hope that everyone can follow the recommendation of the leader and I this evening and accept the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Horrell, appreciated. Leader, would you wish to sum up please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Well, first of all, I would like to thank members for their thoughtful and considered responses to this debate. I share councillor Wallace's view is that we need to take the need to have a more diverse and representative councillor body very seriously. We need to understand any financial barriers, we need to look at all the other barriers that people may face in coming forward because I don't think it's just necessarily about finance, although we do need to be mindful of that and know it's something that councillor Becker is thinking seriously about in our diversity and inclusion work, so it is important that we come more widely representative, but I do think the proposal that's in front of us tonight is fair and balanced. I am grateful for the support of people on all sides and the input that people have made into finalising these recommendations and I would hope that council can support it unanimously tonight. into finalising these recommendations, and I would hope that council can support it unanimously tonight.
Thank you, Leader. Can I just double check? So, we are now voting on the alternative Members' Allowance Scheme. Am I correct in that? Please, may I just ask, just to make sure?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, I will now ask for a show of hands, all those in favour, please? I certainly think that's carried, thank you so much, members, thank you. Right, moving on, ladies and gentlemen, to agenda item seven, the final report and pay policy statement twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. Mr MacArthur, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Agenda item seven is the final report and pay policy statement twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Report C L one six six refers. That report includes the final report and pay policy statement as agreed by the Audit and Governance Committee, together with the minutes of that meeting as appendices. The report can be found on pages one 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 to one four seven of the meeting papers. The recommendations for council are set out on page four of the Agenda Pack and in the report on page one hundred and eleven. Madam Deputy Mayor, apologies, but there is a typographical error in the first paragraph of the report, C L one six six, which appears on page one 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 of the Agenda Pack. And please note that the Audit and Governance Committee considered the final report and pay policy statement at its meeting on the tenth of November and not the twenty-third of November, as stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr MacArthur. Councillor Cutler, would you move the recommendation in the report, please? And do you have a seconder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, sorry. Yes, at the Audit and Governance Committee meeting on the tenth of November, we considered the draft proposal, there were some minor corrections. And I'd like to thank councillor Bronk for his very detailed proofreading of the pay policy statement. The committee also accepted the recommendation in South East Employers that the special responsibility allowance for statutory officers who are not chief officers of the council should be... the recommendation should be accepted that it is increased. This can be found at point four, four point six three in the final version of the report. Therefore, I propose that the recommendation of the Audit and Governance Committee that the pay policy statement for the financial year twenty-three, twenty-four is adopted by council. And I do have a seconder, it's councillor Power.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Councillor Power, do you reserve your right to speak?
I do, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much. Questions, please, ladies and gentlemen, questions? No, then we will go straight into debate, please. Councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I remain very proud of being the executive cabinet member that introduced this council to the living wage employer scheme. And I'm delighted and thank the current administration that we have maintained our accreditation as a living wage employer, and that we ensure that all our employees receive at least a basic wage, which can help them to live properly, and that we try our best to encourage contractors to apply the living wage to all their staff as well. And I would hope that this will continue for many a day. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Godfrey, appreciated. Any more for debate, please? Then councillor Power, may I ask you if you would like to speak now, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a legal requirement that we approve this each year. I think we have a very good understanding of this. And I thank members for their support in this minute, in this moment.
Thank you, councillor Power. So, councillor Cutler, do you wish to sum up, please?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I don't think there's more to say on this subject, so I suggest we put it to the council.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. So, please, may I now put the recommendations on page four in the Agenda Pack to the vote? May I have a show of hands, all those in favour, please? I totally agree with you, David, so I would say that that recommendation is agreed and approved. Thank you very much. So, moving on to agenda item eight regarding the North Whitley Community Governance Review. Mr MacArthur, would you please introduce? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Agenda item eight is the North Whitley Community Governance Review. Report C L one six seven refers, and this is included in the meeting papers on pages one hundred and forty-nine to one hundred and seventy-one. The recommendations for council are set out on page four of the Agenda Pack and also in the report on page one hundred and forty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Becker, would you move the recommendations in the report, please? And do you have a seconder, I will ask?
I do, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councillor Hannah Williams will be seconding.
Thank you.
But just to introduce the paper first, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce this paper. It represents the culmination of years of work by councillors and the public and officers across the political spectrum. It sets out the options for the future governance arrangements for the North Whitley Development Area, and which, once fully constructed, will be a big area. It's three thousand, five thousand, three thousand five hundred homes, two primary schools, a secondary school, and other infrastructure. It's been designed to integrate into the existing development and the residential areas of Whitley. However, the location of the development straddles the boundaries of Curdrige Parish Council and Whitley Town Council. And it was therefore necessary to seek the views of the residents to see that how they would like to be represented in the future. Two consultations have been held in order to understand what the preferences of residents are. The first consultation sought views on four options: a standalone council for the development area, all of the new developments to be represented by Whitley Town Council, all of the new developments to be represented by Curdrige Parish Council, or the boundary to remain unchanged, therefore cutting through the development. The consultation was widely publicised, more than seven hundred responses were received. More than seventy percent of the respondents supported option two, which was representation by Whitley Town Council. The result was discussed at the Licensing and Regulation Committee in December, where the chairs of both Curdrige Parish Council and Whitley Town Council spoke in favour of the draft recommendations. At that meeting, the draft recommendations were approved by the committee, but it was agreed that there should be a further consultation to seek the views on those recommendations, which had been envisaged in the terms of reference. A letter regarding that consultation was sent out to all residents and commercial premises in the affected areas. And of the responses received, ninety-four percent agreed with the proposed boundary changes, eighty-five percent agreed with the proposed number of councillors for the Whitley Town Council, and ninety-two percent agreed with the proposed electoral arrangements. So, by approving these arrangements, we really are putting in place the desire of the residents. So, I propose that the recommendations set out in the paper are adopted by council.
Thank you, councillor Becker. Councillor Williams, did I ask you, did you wish to reserve your right to speak?
You didn't, and I would, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Gentlemen, any questions, please? Councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. If this proposal goes through, would it be correct in saying that any Development Agreement one oh six would be a tripartite agreement with regards to the whole of the development of North Whitley? Which will mean that the parish council with the major build, Whitley, will actually be part of that one oh six agreement? Thank you.
Councillor Becker?
Mr MacArthur, if that's possible, please?
Of course. The situation in relation to the section one oh six agreement is obviously they transfer with the land. There are decisions to be taken about who will be responsible for the areas such as open space, et cetera. They're still to be taken, they're decisions that sit with the city council to take. So, it would be premature at this point to be saying that there would definitely be arrangements, that there are decisions to be taken in due course. But certainly, part of the arrangements, obviously, would be that the town council is likely to be responsible for at least some of the arrangements that are in place under the section one oh six agreement. I just might add that the section one oh six agreement itself is pretty complex and therefore difficult to summarise, as I think I demonstrated in Licensing and Regulation Committee. Thank you.
Mr MacArthur, thank you. Yes, councillor Reed?
The only reason I raise it is because the Newlands area, western Waterlooville, was not included, and consequently, it meant an extra workload for the city council to advertise the land for disposal. The fact that it wasn't part of an agreement, mainly because at that time there was no parish council, per se, in the area. When Den Mead had a similar, and I think it was one of the first in the district, we had the tripartite agreement, so there is no reason to put the land up for open disposal. It will automatically go to the parish council. It will save the city council an enormous amount of time and money, sixteen months so far, with the case of Newlands.
You, councillor Reed, appreciated. Councillor Evans, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Could I just ask about the numbers in the response to the questionnaire? The, I do understand that there are seven hundred and forty-two responses at the close of consultation. Has any analysis been done as to whether those are existing residents who are under the Whitley Parish Council, or the new residents? And then, the next question that I have is the analysis that, can't find it, but there were seventeen, here it is on page one five seven, there were seventeen answers. So, I think claiming that ninety-four percent of the responses is a little misleading, because seventeen responses is nothing, is it? According to the, I think my colleague did give me the numbers of people that are there at the moment, but, oh, here we are, over two thousand. So, could it be that the questionnaire was not an adequate way of communicating with the current residents and the future residents? Sorry, there's three questions there.
Thank you, councillor Evans. Councillor Becker or Mr MacArthur?
I'd appreciate Mr MacArthur's help on the analysis point, but on the other two points, I would say every house was sent a letter. They were, everyone had the opportunity to respond to that second consultation. And I think the low number of responses received is probably reflective of the fact that they weren't angry with what was being proposed, given the clear results in the first consultation, and the very high numbers of people who participated in that first consultation. The parish councils were also involved, they also had the opportunity to spread the word about the second consultation, and again, seventeen responses. It's, I understand should be reflective of the fact that people were not incensed, they were not angry, they were not burning down the bridges or coming to the meeting to speak in opposition to what was being proposed. So, it was properly publicised, everyone received a letter in the post to their address to notify them of this consultation. So, there was opportunity for engagement, and the fact that seventeen people chose to respond. We couldn't really have done more, we literally put a letter through every letterbox.
Thank you, councillor Becker.
Sorry, Mr MacArthur on the analysis point.
Oh, Mr MacArthur, did you wish to?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We did, at the request of the ward councillors, do a further piece of analysis to clarify the results breakdown just within the major development area. The results were slightly lower in the major development area, so it was seventy percent overall, it was nearly fifty-five percent for the major development area, but the results were the same, the trend was the same. In relation to the responses to the second stage of the consultation, as councillor Becker said, we did write out, again, to all the properties, setting out the draft recommendations that had been approved. And we did get, possibly as we predicted, quite a small response to that. But the response we got was, once again, supportive largely of the recommendations. So, I think in terms of the officers involved in the work, we feel that we have a good sense of what the local views were.
Thank you, Mr MacArthur. Councillor Ashwell, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Madam Mayor. Just like to say to councillor Evans, maybe, that there were also two public consultations, one was held in Whitley, the Medeside Centre, one was also held in the Curdrige Reading Rooms, which were fairly well attended. I was there both, so, as well as some of my ward councillors. I just would like to actually, if you don't mind, just thank the officers for the work they've done getting this through so swiftly. It wasn't an easy job at the beginning, but once they got the handle on it, it went through quite smoothly. I'd also like to thank all the residents who did respond, it's quite obvious.
Councillor Ashwell, do you have a question, or would you like to save your thank yous for debate?
Okay, I shall wait.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councillor Crumeyson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm asking this question, really in my role as the Chair of the King's Barton Forum. The question of when will we have a governance review comes up frequently among residents in King's Barton. Now, I know it's very complicated, and there's lots of factors to take account. I have had, I have found it extremely interesting and insightful to see from time to time the progress with the North Whitley governance review, and it's made me realise just how complicated it is and how important it is to get it right. But I kind of would like to ask a very specific question, which is, in North Whitley, the whole development is going to be three and a half thousand houses. I don't believe they've all been built already. So, my question is, what proportion, what number of houses have been built already? And hence, what proportion of the whole three and a half thousand has, have been, you know, completed and are occupied, and in effect, the decision is based around that? Thank you.
Councillor Becker or Mr MacArthur?
Thank you, I can, through you, Madam Mayor, I can see councillor Becker seeking for some clarification at that point. I think the position is, with governance decisions around boundaries, is that the, there has to be sufficient homes occupied in order that the decision is valid. And our residents and town and parish colleagues in Whitley and Curdrige have waited some years before the council felt there were sufficient properties occupied in order that a decision could be made that would represent enough of the residents present there. So, I think although your question is what was the numbers occupied in our Whitley area, I think it's to join the dots forward in order to say when will be ready in King's Barton, potentially. And I think the answer is not yet, because there has to be a sufficient number. And as you've said, councillor Crumeyson, there are, it is a very complicated and it is a very lengthy process. And there are other areas that would also like us to review their boundaries, and other areas where there are strange anomalies around where a property exists. So, an early task for our monitor... So an early task for our monitoring officer will be to look to see whether it is appropriate to undertake a full governance review of all of the boundaries across the district. It's something we've had on the stocks for some time but have not been able to proceed with. But we can get you the specific number to help you with the proportion of properties occupied at North Whitley, but we don't undertake governance reviews until there are sufficient residents present in order that it's a valid decision to be made, if that's helpful. Councillor Becca, madam mayor.
Thank you chief exec. Miss councillor Crumoyson, did you want to just come back and ask?
Yes, if I could, thank you madam deputy mayor. Yes, I totally understand that already and the problem I'm trying to solve, I'm not actually pushing for a governance review too early. What I'm trying to understand are the facts and the factors that are considered that will enable me and other councillors and indeed cabinet members to communicate effectively and to manage expectations effectively. And that's, that's all that's behind it and I was just taking the opportunity to get a data point, which I know would only be a data point and there will be many others. So that's, that's the backdrop to that. So would quite like to have the number sometime.
We will get you those numbers and we can have a conversation about, about the different factors and we will meet with Mrs Evans and talk that through as well.
Thank you so much. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you madam deputy mayor. As points of information, but it's also a question. This governance paper was debated at length by the North Whitley Forum and indeed by the licensing committee. So at this end, with the advice of Miss MacArthur, that's how it was covered adequately, you can always debate about that. Regarding numbers of people involved, the last numbers that I recall of the North Whitley new development, it was slightly under 800 homes are now occupied out of the something like 3000 that are to be built. But the figures, the area also covers, if I can define it, the old Whitley as well, where of course there are many, many more homes, the, and of course Curdridge Parish Council. Correct me if I'm, the question is, correct me if my information is wrong in this sense because I'm not really trying to debate this show, I'm trying to give information about it. The, the issue is with Whitley generally, it is a very fluid society. Last time we worked out the turnover, if you like, was something between 400 and 500 a year. So if you start talking about numbers, statistics, it becomes very, very difficult to take that sort of thing into account. All I can say is, and correct me if I'm wrong here portfolio holder, both the parish council, Curdridge Parish Council and Whitley Town Council were happy. Indeed, the main issue that they had was whether there would be bus shelters provided on the new bus route. Other than that, Miss MacArthur may have had other discussions with them, but that was the same thing that kept in both licensing and in the North Whitley Forum, which is a bit ironic, but nonetheless, it was discussed at length. Am I correcting that?
Thank you councillor Pearson. Is he correct in that councillor Becca?
He is correct and as I said, the chairs of both, both councils came along to the licensing committee to speak in favour of the recommendations.
You so much. Councillor Williams, do you wish to speak now as seconder? Thank you.
Yes, please. I just also wanted to offer my thanks to all of the officers and for all of their work.
Councillor Williams, I've jumped the gun here.
Oh, you've jumped me.
I sincerely apologise to you. I've turned two pages instead of one. Ladies and gentlemen, if there are no more questions, I'm going into debate, please. So. Councillor Achwell, please, thank you.
Thank you deputy madam chair, for giving me a second opportunity to speak. I wasn't expecting to speak the first time. So I'd just like to go back and thank all those residents who did respond. It's quite obvious they would like to be part of Whitley Town Council. My plea is that now that people that have moved into the new area now try and get involved, there will be an election, parish council elections in May, there are still currently two vacancies at Whitley Town Council. So there's an opportunity if they'd like to come and learn how to get involved in the community. I've been a parish councillor myself since 2003, it's 20 years this year. It's well worth getting involved and I urge all members of the community to do that. I'd also like to thank all the officers for managing to get this work through. I know it's been an awful lot of work and thank you very much. And also to the advisory group who helped me also manage to get through the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reed. Achwell, appreciated. Councillor Reed, please.
Thank you Jo, as long as I don't have to answer the name of Vivian. Madam deputy mayor, I served on the first meeting, the governance meeting, and it was fairly clear at that point in time that the two local councils had some real hesitations as to whether they wanted to accept the responsibility of this 3500 development. I could understand what they were talking about, obviously having the same effect of the west of Waterlooville. It is quite a strange move in a sense, but now having conducted the first governance, having conducted the governance review for the new area and the two local councils now agree and support the proposals, I fully support the council's recommendation. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you councillor Reed. Councillor Evans?
Thank you madam mayor. When I was first elected in 1995, I did serve as one of the two councillors for Whitley who at that time were also under Wickham Parish Council, where I was also a parish councillor and that ended when elections were held. So I do know Whitley really well and I'm not going to support this, I probably won't vote against it, but I don't think it's the right decision for the new residents. And I know that Whitley Parish Council, or town council, sorry, are very keen to take ownership of the northern area, but the northern area is not really part of the southern area in my view, which is much more aligned to Faram. This hasn't been to the Whitley Forum. I'm not criticising the consultation process councillor Becca, but it hasn't been to the Whitley Forum. The chair of the Whitley Forum has agreed that it hasn't and I do feel that this is too soon. I think possibly a temporary arrangement would be fine, but a permanent arrangement, setting up Whitley Town Council being in charge of the northern part, I personally don't think it's the right thing for the new residents. Thank you madam deputy mayor.
Thank you councillor Evans. Councillor Isaacs, thank you.
Thank you deputy madam mayor. I'd just like to say that I was obviously on the, on the same committee when they came to speak and I really strongly feel that we should be listening and have listened hopefully to the chairs of both the town and the parish councils and that they feel that they know their residents, they've consulted locally, done everything they can before coming to the, to the council on this. And I think that we've done our bit in relation to putting the question out and the response is very little because they've already made their decision of how they feel and I think it's, we need to listen and hear what everybody has been saying and whilst I know and understand that some people may not feel it's the right time, I think locally they have waited long enough and they feel it is and I thank the time for the committee members listening and want to support the parish councils in relation to this amendment. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Isaacs. If I, no more for debate, then councillor Williams, I'm coming back to you, thank you as a seconder. Thank you.
Thank you madam deputy mayor. So I was thanking the officers for all of their work. I know that this governance review process has been significant workload and I wanted to thank all of those and everyone involved. I think looking at it and the evidence and when we went for it quite forensically in licensing and having the town council and the parish council representatives, it was quite clear that they wanted to have a more effective local services that would represent the local community more effectively. There was also a general feeling that they wanted this in place before the May 2023 elections so that another year wasn't sort of, you know, wasted and left out. So I think it's really, really important that we move this and therefore I will be supporting it.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Becca, do you wish to sum up? Thank you.
I think councillor Williams has done a brilliant job of that already, but I would like to thank everyone who has spoken in support of the paper. I agree, I think this is representative of the residents having their say, this is representative of us listening better to those residents, listening to the parish council and the town council and pushing in place democratic processes so that those residents can have their say at the upcoming parish elections.
Thank you so much. Could I just ask you, when you do speak, and I know you're being very good this evening and I do thank you, could you make sure you stand right up so we get, we can hear you better? I know I don't stand up, but if you would, I would appreciate it. Thank you. So please, may I now put the recommendations on page four of the agenda pack to the vote? And please may I see a show of hands, all those in favour, thank you. All those against? Any abst- Yeah, I've got, yeah. Anyone abstain? Thank you councillor Fern. David, I would say that is agreed. Thank you so much ladies and gentlemen, appreciated. Thank you. Agenda item nine is regarding the appointment of statutory officers. Mr MacArthur, would you please introduce?
Thank you madam deputy mayor. Agenda item nine is the appointment of statutory officers. Report CL 165 refers, and this is included in the meeting papers on pages 173 to 176. The recommendations are for the council to appoint with immediate effect the officers shown in the recommendations are one and two of the report CL 165, the statutory roles of section 151 officer and monitoring officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr MacArthur. Leader, would you move the recommendation in the report please? And do you have a seconder?
Yes, madam deputy mayor, the seconder is councillor Horle.
Thank you so much.
Colleagues, or madam deputy mayor, I would just like to move the recommendations as written, that Elizabeth Keyes be appointed section 151 officer for the council with immediate effect and that Sharon Evans be appointed as council's monitoring officer with immediate effect.
Councillor Horle, do you reserve your, to speak later?
Madam mayor, I'm very happy to support the recommendation as presented by the leader. I'm not sure we need to debate.
Okay, most kind, thank. Any questions please? Sorry, thank you so much. The next item of business on the agenda, item 10, which is for the council to consider notices of motions and members will have seen that we have three this evening. It's councillor Wallace, you will be first sir, but please, before we have notices of motion, would you object councillors, if we have a 10 minute break or a comfort break? If you would be so kind, because the notices of motion will last for about an hour or so, so I, I think you deserve a comfort break first. Is that all agreed? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Evening is agenda, item 10, which is for the council to consider notices of motion. Members will have seen that we have three motions this evening. The agenda sets out this evening's first motion, which is to be moved by Councilor Wallace. Councilor Wallace, do you have a second for your motion, please? Thank you, Councilor Ernie, appreciated. Councilor Wallace, would you present your motion, please? And may I remind you that you have a maximum of eight minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The motion before the council today is twofold. Firstly, to oppose as a matter of council policy any initiatives to develop fracking for shale gas. Secondly, to respond to the county council's consultation on the refreshed minerals and waste plan, stating our opposition to fracking and to the extraction of oil and gas. Current government policy is for a moratorium, or temporary prohibition, on fracking. However, as we have seen over the past few months, the government position in this area is fluid. Therefore, it's important that this council confirms Winchester's position. As you are aware, fracking is a way of extracting gas or oil which is trapped inside rocks. To get the gas or oil out, the rock has to be fractured. A mixture of water, sand and chemicals is pumped down the well at very high pressure. This fractures the rock, and when the pressure is released, the gas or oil flows back up the well. There are many risks surrounding fracking. Fracking risks contaminating water supplies. In England, groundwater is used to supply a third of our drinking water. According to the British Geological Survey, groundwater may be potentially contaminated by extraction of shale gas, both from the constituents of shale gas itself, from the formulation and deep injection of water containing cocktail of additives used for hydraulic fracturing, and from flowback water, which may have a high content of saline formation water. Fracking poses risks to public health. In the UK, 20 leading medical experts recently wrote in the British Medical Journal stating that the arguments against fracking on public health grounds are overwhelming. Fracking poses a risk to our local environment. The area of landscape disturbed by fracking is typically eight to 11 times that of conventional gas drilling. A draft government report states that shale gas development may transform a previously pristine and quiet natural region, bringing increased industrialisation. Fracking does not lead to a jobs boom. The six-year proposed fracking project in Lancashire was anticipated to create just 11 jobs at each of the two sites, according to the fracking company's application. This included onsite, indirect supply chain and induced effects. Fracking is unlikely to reduce energy bills. Even Lord Brown, the former chairman of fracking firm Quadrilla, said that UK shale gas would not have a material impact on gas prices. Fracking in the UK has triggered many small earthquakes. More than 120 tremors were recorded during drilling at a quadrilla site in Blackpool, including one which lasted almost 100 hours. Finally, and most importantly, fracking is incompatible with tackling climate change. And this is the point that ties the second part of the motion regarding opposing oil and gas development in our area. Policy 24 of the draft minerals and waste plan states that oil and gas development will be supported, subject to environmental and amenity considerations. Frankly, this position, even with the caveats, is shocking. In May 2019, the UK government declared a climate emergency. In June 2019, Hampshire County Council declared a climate emergency, and yet both groups are still producing policies that are contrary to these declarations. Last summer, the High Court found the UK government's climate strategy unlawful, as it doesn't show how the UK's legally binding carbon budgets or net zero commitment will be met. Now, we have Hampshire County Council carrying on with a business's normal approach, ignoring the basic requirements for decarbonising our economy. Scientists agree that if we are to avoid dangerous levels of global warming, the majority of fossil fuel reserves need to stay in the ground. At the same time, the government's own net zero review that was published last week identified the massive opportunities to both the economy and to communities from switching to clean, green energy. There is absolutely no justification for further oil and gas development, and it's time that policies are put in place to support the transition that is needed. I propose this motion to council and hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Wallace. Councillors, we now have 20 minutes to debate the motion, please. Thank you. Councilor Bolton, thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Madam Mayor. Probably got that in the wrong order, I apologise for that, it's my first time. I used to live in the States for many years and experienced firsthand some quite horrifying press coverage of fracking. Granted, it was the Wild West out there, and the regulations were not quite as stringent as they are in the UK. But fracking is something that is an aggressive form of extraction of hydrocarbons, and the law plays of unintended consequences plays a large part, I think, in that process. And we've all seen that, and I agree with Malcolm that there's, Councilor Wallace, I apologise, that there is, you know, those consequences can be pollution of groundwater, et cetera. So that part of Councilor Wallace's motion, I find the easiest to agree with. And I think clearly, you know, the Prime Minister has made it, the current Prime Minister obviously, has made it quite clear that he also supports the moratorium that was in the, you know, that was won in the election for, you know, on fracking. It's the second part of your motion that I have the most trouble with, literally because of the opposition to the extraction of oil and gas per se. You said very eloquently as well, you used the phrase 'transition', and I think this is a transition, and I believe, like I know most people in this room believe, that we need to transition away from hydrocarbons as soon as possible. But it's not possible to just do it immediately without consequences that none of us are prepared to deal with. And so I would like to propose an amendment to that portion of Councilor Wallace's motion to the effect that, do you wish me to read that motion now, deputy?
One moment, Councilor Bolton. Chief Exec, can I just double check with you, please? Thank you.
Take a motion that's put on the floor of council if you are satisfied that there has been sufficient debate on the motion that sits before you at the moment. So you may wish to ask Councilor Bolton just to hold his position just for a moment or two, to hear if there are any other views. Of course, if there aren't, then of course, Councilor Bolton could proceed. Thank you.
Most kind, thank you. So, Councilor Bolton, if you could just hold fire for a minute? Thank you, sir, I'd appreciate it. Councilor Leaming.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with the anti-fracking point of view. We are sitting on aquifers, and fracking does cause enormous amount of damage within the subsoil. We've seen problems in America where the waters have ended up being contaminated, and we supply a large area with drinking water. The other thing we've got to look at is what goes on in Denmark, where there are really severe problems, where they've been fracking the gas under the Grønigand field, and they're experiencing now really severe after-effects, so I have a great deal of reservations on that. With the point on the oil, I think we have to be very careful there, because we're in a situation where Russia is holding the world to ransom on energy. And we do have an oil field already in Winchester, up on Three Mates Hill, so we don't really want to see too many more donkeys happening around. So I think that's my position on that, that I really am against the fracking part of it.
Thank you, Councilor Leaming. Councilor Williams, thank you.
Just to note, Councilor Pearson's been trying to catch your eye. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Pearson, have you? But I'll put your name down now, I promise, on the sheet.
I will be supporting this motion, because I believe that fracking is an absolute travesty to our environment. In the South, we have and could potentially face a problem of having a 3 million litres shortage per day of water by 2040. The risk to groundwater in this area is just far too great for the tiny amount of actual gas that we will be able to get out. The chemicals that are pumped in, we don't actually know the actual true damage that they will be, and also there's a massive risk of leakage. And I just feel that it's really important that we support this. As to the creating new fossil fuels, I think we realise that if we're looking at the weather and we're looking at the world today, you can stand there and say Putin is holding us to ransom, he is. But there's one way to solve that problem, and that's to move further and forward with green energies. If we'd had a policy that had been more proactive in this manner as a nation, we wouldn't be in the situation we are. Luckily, we only have 5% of our gas from Russia, which is a lot less than a lot of other countries. So that puts us, if we look to Scotland and how they're using their renewables up Hence why I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams. I think next in line was councillor Porter.
Thank you very much, Deputy Ma'am, Deputy Mayor. I would like to just go on from where Brian, councillor Laming, made the point, that the extraction of oil actually continues very quietly in our district, not just, just as you described, at the top of Bajafarm-Olive's battery district, but also in the South Downs National Park, where oil is also extracted. The oil doesn't gush out, it has to be pumped out, not by fracking, but by pumping in salt water. And then the salt water and the oil that come out are separated as oil and water at the surface. Ironically, a solar farm has been built right next door. And I think that generations in the future will think how ridiculous that we have to pump things out of the ground that have been there for thousands and millions of years, when actually there's the sun shining on our own surface and producing the energy we need. The Minerals and Waste Plan, to which Winchester will be responding, and will be responding against oil and gas extraction, actually talks about being carbon neutral by 2050, but doesn't actually talk about that as a specific change in the plan. And I think that's a really sad miss-out on the plan. It really should have been included. And we've mentioned it many times before, at this council, take all fossil fuels out of running our new homes. We know that government is stopping the production of, or insisting on stopping the production of new boilers from 2025. We do know that we're having conversations with our own developers, large and small, to say, you must think about taking the running of homes using oil and gas into account when you're thinking about how you're going to build homes. It's all part of what we were talking about earlier in our council plan. It's actually at the forefront of everything we do. So yes, I do support the motion very much. And I want to see that the county council are listening to all of the people that reply. So if you wish to reply, please do so. You just go to the county council's form and you fill it in as an individual, as well as us as the council. I don't think I'm having to declare an interest because I'm also a county councillor in this, but I'd just like to make the point, Diane. But I do think that this council owes our own communities the agreement to this motion so that we can show very clearly that we are committed not to take fossil fuels out of the ground, even if they feel they want to do so.
Thank you councillor Porter. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Well, first let me say that I agree with the government's policy, and that is that there is a cancellation, a temporary cancellation perhaps, on fracking. The difficulty with this, there's so much misinformation flying through the system, much of which has come from the United States, where everybody is aware the following of regulations is, shall we say, very, very loose. The result is, a lot of the issues that we have pointing at fracking dangers in this country are over-exaggerated. I'm not saying none of them are true, but we don't have any evidence of that. The two sites where fracking did take place, using carboniferous rocks in Lancashire, were closed down as soon as there were tremors. Let me emphasise that, tremors, not earthquakes, there's a difference in that definition. Talking about earthquakes, and that does lead to damage to buildings. Tremors don't necessarily do so. Indeed, you've all experienced a tremor. Every time a heavy lorry has gone past you and you've been on the pavement, the ground shakes. That's a tremor. Now, sometimes they're very dangerous, sometimes not so much. Now, what we do know from research that's already taken place within the Hampshire Basin is that we, or the drilling companies, are looking at Jurassic rocks, not carboniferous. And to reach the Jurassic rocks, they have to go down something like two, three kilometres, well below the aquifers that we use for drinking water. Whether those aquifers would be polluted by that is debatable. I don't have enough information to debate one way or another, but there's enough information to give me strong reservations. So from that point of view, I'm alongside councillor Wallace in what he says, encouraging the county council to think again, perhaps, about changing the existing policies. It is, after all, it's an issue for the county council, not ourselves. That does not say we shouldn't have an opinion, we should, but we're only consultees. I'm drawing my comment on that actually from the city council's own website, which effectively states that. So unless we're going to change that wording on the website to suit whatever opinion may be, which is not impossible, then we've got to be very careful with what we say. But equally, we've got to be very careful as to what information we use when we're talking about the Hampshire Basin, which is a basin. It's the same basin as the Paris Basin to the south of us. But going down through the Tershe Rocks, you get a discontinuity there and you then get, in other words, the gap in the geological strata. You then get to the Jurassic Rocks, there are layers that are missing from the system. Now, what the impact of that discontinuity would be on fracking is questionable. We already have fracking in this country and we have had for years in the North Sea. The oil is extracted and the natural gas is extracted by using fracking. We've had fracking in the Midlands since about nineteen forties. I've, when I was brought up, drinking water from out of the pit. Fishburne Colliery is just a road from where I lived.
Councillor Pearson, I love listening to you, but we only have about six minutes left and I have four more speakers.
Give me thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you.
I was brought up drinking water out of the local colliery. Was it contaminated? Well, here I am, eighty years later. Sure if it was, it didn't infect me. So in that sense, I support what councillor Wallace is saying, but please have reservations. This is a decision for the county council to make on ourselves.
Thank you so much councillor Pearson, appreciated. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I apologise when I referred to you earlier as Madam Mayor, that will be next year. So I would like to speak in support of this motion brought by councillor Wallace today. It's already been said in the chamber this evening that addressing the climate emergency isn't an option, it's an imperative. And we've heard other councillors talk about, we're already extracting fossil fuels, we're already extracting oil. You know, we've done this in the past. We all know that what we've done in the past isn't fit for our future. I clearly and categorically can say, I do not think we should be seeking to extract any additional fossil fuels from the ground and thereby releasing the carbon that they have into the atmosphere. Instead, we should be seeking to reduce the carbon that we have in our atmosphere. We can all see, even in Winchester, the effects that carbon in the atmosphere is having on our climate, from floods, from the heat in the summer, from not being able to sleep night on night. Apologies councillor Pearson, I didn't speak when you were speaking. I agree there is a contradiction in the county council having declared a climate emergency, be that to become carbon neutral by 2050, which is undoubtedly far, far too late, and there's plenty of evidence to support that. And then to seek to issue licences for the extraction of fossil fuels from the ground. There is also an issue that while we continue to rely on fossil fuels, despite all the circumstances we find ourselves in, there isn't that investment in renewable energy that we need. And it's just too easy not to make the tough choices now. So I'm happy to support the motion and I'd like to thank councillor Wallace for bringing it today.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Councillor Godfrey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My ignorance on the subject of fracking is quite deep, in that I have not had to consider this anywhere near my ward or in this district. Until then, I will continue to be very sceptical about the benefits of having any fracking proposed. However, I hope that anyone who would support this second part of the motion tonight will enjoy their walk or their cycle home to their cold, unheated homes, in the sure knowledge that they are doing their best for society. Because those who, like me, will go home to a heated house, will be relying on oil and gas to heat that home, whether it's through electricity or through gas heating. Will be driving cars, whether electric or traditional carbon-using cars, rely on oil and gas to provide the power that we use to drive home. I will not be a hypocrite. I cannot support a motion which requires the closure of oil and gas extraction in this county. I certainly wouldn't want to replace oil and gas extraction in this county with more oil and gas being imported from across the globe. Therefore, Madam Mayor, I would ask you to take the amendment from councillor Bolton now.
Thank you councillor Godfrey. Councillor Bolton, I still have councillor Lerni, if she wishes to speak on the original motion now. Yes, councillor Lerni?
Madam Mayor, I think I'd prefer to respond to the amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Lerni. So if there's no more for debate on the motion, councillor Bolton, may I ask you to move your amendment? And do you have a second, dear, please, sir?
I do.
Councillor Godfrey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thank you councillor Lerni as well for granting me the time to do this. So the proposed amendment to be would be respond to the consultation to the county council's refreshed mineral and waste plan, stating we would only support a just transition away from extraction of oil and gas as part of the government pathway to carbon neutrality, and also state our opposition to further licences for extraction above and beyond those already agreed. And I've got copies of this if you wish to... Thank you.
Chief Exec, can we have a copy, please? Is that all right? Thank you, Mr Blakemore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I wonder if we just might take a few moments in order that members can read the amendment and the deputy monitoring officer and I might take a view on whether it is indeed a valid amendment in the terms of the constitution. Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much.
So I wonder if we just might adjourn for a few moments, Madam Mayor, and turn off the recording in order that we can do that consideration against the view of the webcast. Thank you.
Yep, we will adjourn for a few moments. Bolton, thank you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor, and thank you councillors. We have taken the time usefully to discuss the amendment. In my view, and I think it is accepted by councillor Bolton, but I'll let him speak for himself in a moment, we think there was a difficulty with the amendment because under the council's constitution amendments must not have the effect of introducing an entirely new proposition or negating the motion before council. And in my view, that is the effect of the amendment as proposed. Thank you.
Is that all right, councillor Bolton?
Madam deputy mayor, regrettably, it is. Can I just make one comment that sadly, I think that was the one point that councillor Wallace and I agreed on, and unfortunately, well, it's just a pity. Thank you.
But thank you councillor Bolton, appreciated. So I'm going back to the original motion from councillor Wallace and councillor Lerni. I ask you two if you would like to speak now. Thank you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I would like to emphasise that before this motion was submitted, it was discussed with officers to make sure that this worked as far as this council is concerned, and wasn't an issue. I think we have heard what councillor Bolton has said, but I think recent experience shows that we can't rely on whoever today's conservative leader is to set policy for our district. Recent decisions on coal extraction have shown the government has no regard for its own pathway to net zero, let alone a desirable one. In 2021, the International Energy Agency found that no new oil and gas fields and all coal mines were needed under its 1.5 degree C-aligned net zero by 2050 scenario. Further research has shown that just using the fuel in existing coal, gas and oil fields will take global warming beyond 2 degrees C. Any support for new fossil fuel extraction is wildly divergent from this council's policy on climate change reaffirmed this evening. We need to be leaving some of those existing reserves in the ground, not developing more. Clearly, we have an agreement on fracking, so I won't talk about that. But I do think it's important to say that many of our residents will be unaware of the fossil fuel reserves that can be found within our district, and will be shocked to discover the potential that we might support fossil fuel extraction near their towns and villages, even if only by omission and failing to respond in a way to the county where we make clear our opposition to this. We do need to respond to the county's minerals and waste plan shortly, and should make a clear statement opposing not only fracking, but any further development of fossil fuel in our district. Thank you, madam deputy mayor.
Thank you councillor Lerni. So councillor Wallace, coming back to your motion, sir, I am going to close the debate on it, and now ask you to exercise your right to reply if you wish to the debate.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I'd just like to thank all the members for a good debate on this subject. I do appreciate everybody's efforts to try and find something which we could all sign up to. So, but yes, so thank you for the debate, and thank you for trying to find some common ground there.
Thank you councillor Wallace and members. I will now put councillor Wallace's motion to the vote. Please, could I have a show of hands? All those in favour, please? Thank you. Those against, please? Abstentions? Thank you, Mr Blakemore. So I make it that that motion is agreed. Thank you councillors. Thank you councillor Wallace. Now we have the next motion, which is to be moved by councillor Horrell. Councillor Horrell, do you have a second for the motion, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you councillor Brooke. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. Councillor Horrell, may I ask you to present your motion, please? And as you know, you have a maximum of eight minutes. Thank you very much.
Madam deputy mayor, thank you for allowing me to propose a motion tonight, which I trust all councillors will feel equally strongly about. The local government association carried out a census in 2022. This census provides the most comprehensive, timely overview of local government representation, and compares it with previous year's data and how this has changed over time. Almost 17,000 councillors in England were asked to participate, a total of over 5,000 responded, a response rate of 30%. The 2022 census was conducted in the context, obviously, of the COVID-19 pandemic and its effect on local communities, and the recent prominent issues of personal safety. Debating and disagreeing with one another is a healthy part of democracy, but abuse and intimidation crosses the lines into dangerous territory. The right engagement matters, which is why it is shocking seven in 10 councillors reported experiencing abuse and intimidation over the last 12 months, and councillors reported feeling that abuse is becoming more common and increasing in severity. The intimidation and abuse of councillors in person or otherwise undermines democracy. It can prevent elected members from representing the communities they serve, deter individuals from standing for election, and undermine public trust in the democratic processes. Debating and disagreeing with one another has always been, and will continue to be, a healthy part of democracy. However, the right engagement matters, and abuse and intimidation crosses the line into dangerous territory and has no place in our politics. The LGA is calling for change. They are starting to build a picture of the level of abuse and intimidation councillors receive on a daily basis for simply carrying out the role in their community. Anyone, regardless of their background or political affiliation, should feel safe to become a councillor and be proud to represent their community. But the increasing level of abuse and intimidation aimed at local politicians is undermining that. In our own district, I have been involved with candidates who've received abusive letters, received racial remarks in public, and had their family treated badly. And this follows on from the extreme situations where MPs have been harmed fulfilling their duties. These are all unacceptable, and I hope we all agree that this is not the way to work, not the way to encourage candidates to stand or our elected councillors to re-stand. So what are we trying to achieve this evening? The LGA Debate Not Hate campaign aims to raise public awareness of the role of councillors in their communities, encourage healthy debate, and improve the responses and support for local politicians facing abuse and intimidation. I am asking us as a council to commit to challenge the normalisation of abuse against councillors and officers, and uphold exemplary standards of public and political debate in all it does. For us to formally sign up to the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign, and in addition to write to our local members of parliament to ask them to support the campaign too. For us to regularly review the support available to councillors in relation to abuse and intimidation and councillor safety. To work with the local police to ensure there is a clear and joined-up mechanism for reporting threats and other concerns about the safety of councillors and their families, and to discuss the need for a preventative approach that accounts for the very specific risks that councillors face, as they do now with other high-risk individuals such as MPs. To take a zero-tolerance approach to abuse on councillors and officers is what I think we should stand for. What could raising awareness and monitoring mean for us in just an everyday way? We could put the Debate Not Hate campaign on our banners, on our email signatures. We could put the details on our social media profiles and using that in all our communications at the council. And we could actually put posters up to display to public on nights like tonight, and award surgeries that we expect a certain behaviour. All easy to action, and small actions, but a statement of real intent. It is key to ensure our council has a clear reporting mechanism which councillors can use to monitor and record incidents of harassment and abuse of councillors, and importantly, of officers. Madam deputy mayor, I hope that we can agree this evening the strategic intent, and then work with our officers and committee chairs to ensure we implement the actions that we need to undertake for this campaign. That we take this issue seriously, and don't just cast it off as political banter, but stand together as a council and alongside our officers to uphold exemplary standards of public and political debate in all we do. Thank you, madam mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Leader.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Horle and councillor Brooke for bringing forward this motion tonight and councillor Horle for her forceful speech introducing the motion. This is a very important issue that has had all party support at the Local Government Association and I hope the same will be here too tonight. And it's something I know that you were talking about, the nature of debate, but I know that both councillor Horle and I believe to be important and try to encourage in our debates at full council and other meetings. Having discussed this with my colleagues, I'm more than happy to sign up on behalf of the administration to the actions highlighted for which we have direct responsibility and to be joint signatories on any letter to MPs with the other parties and groups. So the Liberal Democrat Group will be supporting this motion this evening and I look forward to hearing members' views in the remainder of the debate.
Thank you, Leader. We now have debate, we will take debate and you will have 20 minutes and I believe first on my list is councillor Kern.
Madam Deputy Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening on this motion. And I think it comes at an incredibly apt time. We're living in a world that seems more divided than ever, a divisive media, a society where on social media you can hide behind your words and if someone doesn't agree with you, you're wrong. Across the globe, politics has become a topic that you don't bring up around a dinner table if you want to be invited back again. And a gap is being created that we're living in a world where it's okay to use your words and language to belittle and cause harm, to score a point, to upset and to harm. We're in a world where it seems that healthy debate seems long gone. An element I wanted to focus on in my piece this evening, that some may say the theatre of politics has gone too far. No longer can you have a friendly disagreement across the floor and have your voice heard. Just look at Prime Minister's Questions and the examples set in the Scottish Parliament and parliaments across the world. Everything in our world seems to become more toxic, people attacking each other online, in person and in the media, without actually offering a suggestion of how to fix the challenges we face and without accountability. Now, we may not be in Westminster, but we are all under that same political umbrella. If those elected to govern cannot engage in healthy debate and show, without showing discord and confrontation, what example does politics set? Anger on the doorstep and verbal abuse in all forms to councillors and campaigners across the land is not acceptable. But why are they upset? Is it because they don't feel consulted or heard or on every level? Are there challenges that as an entire community across the country, we're not listening to and helping deal with the challenges that we face in 2023? Frustrations as a local councillor that we can't always have a direct due restriction on those issues, but despite these challenges, anger and aggression is certainly not the answer. I'm pleased to say that a large majority of our residents act responsibly, but this global toxicity leaves us in a very dangerous situation and this is why this motion is so important for this council to help set the right tone. The art of debating is a fine one. It's the coming together of ideas, two bits of a concept, respectfully agreeing and disagreeing, a forum to ask a fair question and getting a dignified response with the aim of finding a common ground or consensus. In a world of over eight billion people, we're not going to agree on everything, but every resident's view is just as important, every councillor's view is just as important. And it's important that we have a society where everyone feels able to share their views without detriment to themselves or their family. Respect, empathy and integrity are words ingrained in you as an army officer and words that I see are more important than ever now as we look at our own actions as how we conduct our business. Negative words is something we've all had to deal with growing up, being told we're not good enough or somebody not liking you. And I personally know from my career away from politics, the harm that can be done by social media and our very colleague across the floor, councillor Tippett Cooper himself, since being a councillor, has been subject to abuse, which is certainly not acceptable. We have the opportunity here to set out a stool, to set a marker and set a precedent together as a group, cross-party, to set the correct tone. And that's why I will be fully supporting this motion this evening, as we expect a zero tolerance in this room. That message can go across the district that hate will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kern. Councillor Becker.
Thank you. I will stand up this time. Many of you know that in my day job, I sometimes have the opportunity, the privilege of being in the House of Commons. And when I'm there, inevitably my eye gets drawn to a small plaque that sits behind the members of parliament. And that plaque is a memorial to Joe Cox, who was killed carrying out a constituent surgery. I also always think about David Amis, again, someone who only ever hear that he was a thoroughly good, hardworking MP, again, killed, added surgery with his constituents. Something we all do, something we do without thinking. We go, we visit residents when they say they have an issue, they welcome us in, who knows what could happen. And you'd like to think that those two examples are far beyond what we would ever face as councillors. But the data that councillor Horle has shown, 70% of councillors report that they have faced abuse or intimidation or a threat. And I know when we raised this issue within our own Lib Dem group, the number of people who responded to say, oh yeah, I've had that too, I had to report that to police, reflects that number within this room and I'm sure the other side probably have exactly the same number. And that number only goes up if you are a member of an ethnic minority, if you are a woman, if you are transgender, if you are gay, the, a level of abuse that you will face is higher. And that means that those people who aren't straight white men, who have something that marks them apart, they don't stand for politics, they don't represent groups within this chamber and therefore our democracy suffers because we aren't representative of the community. And that means that those voices are not heard here, that we don't reflect them and we don't reflect the community that we live in. So I absolutely, wholeheartedly and unreservedly support this motion. I thank councillor Horle for bringing it forward.
Thank you councillor Becker. Councillor Williams.
I will also stand this time properly. I'm deputy madam mayor. I wholeheartedly support this. I think words matter, words are key. How we speak to people, how we say things matters. It sets a precedent and it allows people to truly understand how we think and we feel. I think by having a coordinated campaign to explain to people that actually sometimes you can't just shout at people, you can't just be rude to people, it's not acceptable, it's not fair. We live in a world that's kind of disjointed with people online believing they can behave and say things to the rest of us in the real world or even online through a hidden veil and it is not right and it is not fair. We should have a, you know, a council that is able to be representative of our community. We only get that if we can encourage more people from different ethnic groups, from different backgrounds into this chamber, because only by representing what Winchester looks like can we actually have a better council that serves our community. So I will be supporting this and thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Tippett Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I also welcome this motion and sincerely thank councillor Horle and her group for bringing it forward. Abuse is very different from robust debate and criticism, decisions made by those elected to office. After the City of Sanctuary motion last year, which was passed unanimously by this council, committing to becoming a more welcoming and accessible place to those fleeing violence and persecution from overseas. After this motion passed on social media platforms, email and anonymous comments on various websites, they're almost always anonymous, aren't they? I was subject to abuse myself. Perhaps the worst was racist xenophobic comments about my family, who I referred to in my City of Sanctuary speech. And I hasten to add that I was swiftly and totally supported by members in our group and in particular councillor Westwood, our group manager, and indeed members on the opposite benches too, which I'm always very eternally grateful for. But it is vital that the support available for councillors is regularly reviewed and improved where possible, as this motion rightly calls for, because the ways and means of carrying out abuse develops and changes over time. And this motion has a clear practical benefit in that it causes us to look and ensure that we adapt our support mechanisms as a council. We need to, as councillors, be immersed in our communities and a modern way of doing this effectively is via social media. That is healthy for our democracy and it is healthy for our democracy if we as councillors are engaging openly and publicly on those platforms. So abuse of councillors, not challenge of councillors, not challenge their decisions or their views, but abuse of them damages democracy because it deters councillors from going onto those platforms in the first place. My two final points, and this motion isn't just for councillors, as has been eloquently said already, it's crucially for two other groups. Firstly, it applies to council officers and it calls for a zero tolerance approach to abuse of council officers and this is absolutely vital. Council officers are doing vital work in often very challenging circumstances and they need their members, all of us, to step forward and show support them from abuse. I mean, I dare say this motion could be amended to ensure that the support referred to in bullet two incorporates council officers too, but I think in essence the call for zero tolerance can mean that we'll incorporate it. I'm sure when the plans to make practical steps to change, to review things are undertaken that we look at how this applies to council officers as well. And secondly, my final point, and very eloquently made by councillor Becker, is this motion is also for those who would become councillors in future, people who we are trying to persuade to take up this very challenging but very rewarding role. And the fear of abuse is, in my view, a key barrier to becoming a councillor, particularly to those with protective characteristics who the LGA identifies as being at particular high risk. And we need as a council to create the conditions to become a more diverse chamber and this motion is a step in the way to doing that. So thank you very much for bringing it and I hope everyone supports it, I'm sure they will.
Thank you councillor Tippett Cooper. Councillor Gordon Smith, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, I would like to thank councillor Horle for introducing this. I think it's very worthwhile and I think that democracy works on the basis of recognising the validity of other people's opinions, even though they may contain errors. However, I think by and large, I've always found the debate in our council chamber polite and courteous, I mean, but certain amount of sarcasm and irony creeps in from time to time. I think for me, the major problem I've found has been when one's canvassing on doorsteps and you can get an awful lot of abuse about all sorts of issues. I think with practice, one does develop a slight second sense about the house whose door you're knocking on and the sort of reaction you may get from it. And you know, you have to sort of fortify yourself sometimes. I do, I think that one of the points about raising the public awareness of councillors is very important because people don't fully understand what we do and I think that would be, you know, we can put lovely signs up stating our intentions, but actually going out and explaining it and sort of selling the idea, it is difficult to find people who are prepared to be councillors and I think the abuse that you get on doorsteps is one of the reasons. So I wholly support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gordon Smith. Councillor Evans, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, sorry. A lot has been said about physical abuse and I wholeheartedly support and don't agree with physical abuse and very sad cases of people who have actually met their death when doing their job in ward surgeries. But abuse can also be verbal and I knew when I accepted the job as Chair of Planning that it was a difficult job because you only please half the people probably in the room and not the other half. But what I noticed during lockdown was the awful abuse that I kept getting from people who had nothing else to do but sit and listen to the recordings of the previous planning meeting and then write in to tell me what they thought of it. Now, I can take that, you know, but the people who locally were involved in that, I still haven't let go. You know, they're writing in the parish magazine, they are telling people that, oh, I made the wrong decision. And I don't choose to give it any oxygen, I just ignore it. But I would like to thank the chief executive and the officers for their support in these times. Just one little story, when I was deputy leader, the leader and I got a little Christmas present each, all wrapped up, you know, really nicely in bows and I put it under the tree. When I opened it on Christmas Day, it was a packet of Pakso stuffing with the message, get stuffed. And I was really upset about that, but it's not abuse, but I just thought it would amuse you to say, to hear, you know, the sort of things that we have to put up with. But I do endorse the notice of motion.
Thank you councillor Evans. Councillor Wallace, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy, Madam Deputy Mayor. That's it. I'm not going to be able to do it as eloquently as anybody else, I'm just going to say, on behalf of the Green Group, we wholeheartedly support this.
Councillor Wallace, well said. Councillor Loney, thank you.
Thank you. I think councillor Wallace has emphasised part of the point I wanted to make, which is that I too endorse this, but this really isn't about snowflakes who can't take being told that they are wrong, who can't take a joke whether it's told about them or indeed by themselves about them. We do accept that many of the matters we deal with are emotional, people, councillors will get hit up, but there have to be, there has to be limits to that and we have to accept those limits. And in particular, when officers are involved, we have to respect the fact that they don't have the right to talk back in the way we do. And I think it's really important that we consider officers in this. As a councillor, I have received threats, I once received an I know where you live letter posted through my letterbox when I was representing some residents against a local landlord. They were too frightened to take this up themselves and it was my job as a councillor to do it for them. But we shouldn't be put in those kind of positions. We've also, on a number of occasions, had meetings where groups of members of the public have felt they have the right to stop decisions they disagree with taking place and that too is wrong and something that we need to fight against. But we accept that we're not always right, we disagree, there are things where fundamentally we never will come together on, but it is important that we debate it in a healthy, friendly and hopefully reasonably cheerful way.
Thank you councillor Loney. Councillor Cook, please, and then I will ask councillor Brooke as second. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Well, I stand before you this evening, all of you, unfortunately for me, yes, I will be supporting this motion, but I was one of those people that last summer, I was verbally abused and it takes a lot for me to walk away from somewhere and just burst into tears. But whilst I was at Compton Lock in Shalford stroke Twyford, I was talking to a fisherman who was actually illegally fishing and I said to him in a very polite way, actually, you're not supposed to be fishing here and there is a sign over there. But it wasn't him that retaliated, he took it on board, he reeled in the rod and walked away. But unfortunately, it was something that was actually swimming in the water that then started to hurl abuse at me. And I just carried on and did what I needed to do. So for me, this is a great motion and I will be supporting it. And even to talk about what happened that day, it was not pleasant. So thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cook. So we've got 1 minute 33 seconds, but councillor Brooke as second, please, over to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I had a wonderful speech written, but most of you have said everything I was going to say on that and I am delighted that everybody is so passionate about supporting this. To me, this is really important that we've included officers in this because I think they very often get abuse also, not only from the public, but have also historically from councillors and I think that it's time that that stops. I think it's important that we review the policies we have in supporting people with that abuse regularly and I think it's really important that we all support this. But what I do also fundamentally think is that while we need to stop the hate, because I think that there's probably not a single person in this room that hasn't received abuse of some sort, it's just the first step. We do need to set- We do need to set the example in our council meetings, in our dealings with each other. We need our MPs to support it and set those examples. We need to start to change the way things are, the way politicians are. Just a lighthearted example, in I'm a Celebrity, whether you agree with the MP who went in or not, they said, well, he was an MP, he was always going to be hated. And I think just that as a sentiment, actually, is probably true and equally disgusting, regardless of political party. So I think that the whole thing has to change, and this is a great first step. Many thanks.
Thank you, councillor Brooke. So I will now close this debate of councillor Horrell's motion, but ask you, councillor Horrell, to exercise your right to reply to the...
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and just thank you to everyone who has spoken in support this evening of this motion. As you know, I feel strongly about it, and it is really encouraging to hear your support this evening, and actually quite shocking to hear so many of you tell your story about the abuse that you have received in the course of your duties as a councillor. And I hope that this will go some way to actually offering a better environment for all of us to actually deliver for our residents. Also, I'm hugely supportive that everything that applies to us should apply to the officer team, who equally come under pressure and don't always have the same level of right of reply as we do. So, Madam Mayor, I thank you for the opportunity tonight, I hope that we'll have overwhelming support, and I look forward to working with everyone as we make this a reality for the Winchester City Council, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. So, members, may I now put councillor Horrell's motion to the vote? With a show of hands, all those in favour, please. I have a feeling, yes, Mr Blakemore, and councillor Horrell, may I just say a big thank you, thank you. Now, next motion is to be moved by councillor Batho. Councillor Batho, do you have a second for your motion, please, sir?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, councillor Gordon Smith.
And councillor Gordon Smith, would you...
I'd like to reserve my right to speak, thank you.
So you have eight minutes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think in light of the time, I might not exceed that.
I have a timer, so, yeah, thank you so much, sir.
Local people understand how high vehicle speeds blight communities and inhibit their ability to walk, cycle, and use public transport. They know that lower speeds save lives and reduce pollution, and they appreciate that 20 mile an hour can be the cornerstone of building inclusive communities. In success of UK government surveys, 70% said that 20 mile an hour was the right speed limit for residential streets. With each one mile reduction, well, one mile per hour reduction in urban average speeds, delivering a 6% reduction in casualties, 20 mile an hour limits typically deliver 20% fewer casualties when fast roads are included. As well as easing the personal trauma of those involved and helping to lighten the load on the NHS, the benefits go way beyond, into population-wide improvements in public health and increased active travel, bringing mobility benefits to children and the elderly, and reducing both emissions, 20 mile an hour is 25% cleaner than 30 miles an hour in urban settings, and noise, 50% quieter at 20 miles an hour. Lower speed limits are being introduced across the world as health, road safety, and environmental professionals see how they transform our communities. In its global plan for road safety, the UN calls for 20 mile an hour to be implemented as a default wherever motors mix with vulnerable road users. Some countries have responded to this at national level, Spain has already set a national 30-kilometre limit default for urban and village roads, and Wales is planning to change its national default 20 mile an hour limit for built-up roads this year. So Winchester has always historically taken a lead in implementing 20 mile an hour zones in Hampshire, implementing the city centre zone and the Highcliff and Winall 20 areas alongside Hampshire County Council-initiated zone in Stanmore in 2014. Winchester City Council has worked in partnership with Hampshire County Council to develop a movement strategy which provides a framework for active travel related to infrastructure within the city centre. Active travel is further promoted in the city and district by local cycling and walking infrastructure plans. In conjunction with Hampshire, Winchester City Council has also recently submitted funding for a mini Holland to develop additional schemes to encourage active travel. So what I'm asking for in this motion is that this council expresses its support for the 20s Plenty for Hampshire campaign, that we should call on Hampshire County Council to extend the 20 mile an areas in Winchester City and introduce new ones in the wider district where appropriate, as part of the wider programme to support active travel. We should support parish councils in the Winchester district who want 20 mile an hour zones. We should request Hampshire County Council to make the 20 mile an hour speed limit the default in county in places where people live, work, shop, play, or learn, leaving a 30 mile an hour limit as an exception on those roads where full consideration for the needs of vulnerable road users allows a high limit. And we ask the leader of the council to write to our district's county councillors, the members of Hampshire County Council's Universal Services Transport and Environment Select Committee, and the executive lead member for Universal Services to support this change. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Batho. The council again has 20 minutes to debate this motion, so any debate, please. Senator Bolton.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker, Madam Speaker, Mayor. I'm getting above myself. 20 mile per hour slowing down traffic in rural communities is a major issue for me. The upper Meon Valley is an area where I campaigned on exactly that issue, that we wanted to slow down traffic in on those village roads. The more I have investigated this, gone into this, and discussed it with the county portfolio holders and other people who are more expert in traffic management than myself, the more I understand this is a complex issue. And so I wholeheartedly support the idea of reducing speeds. The bit that I'm slightly concerned about is the sort of way in which there seems to be a prescription within your motion, and that I feel it's more complicated. And I think the element that is missing from the motion is really the consultation with communities, with the police, and with other experts. I know that this is a county matter, and that there is an enormous amount of work that has been done and is due to be published and debated, I'm sure. I would like to see the outpourings of that, and how that will be implemented, and what effect that that will be on our communities. But I think overwhelmingly, for me, the element that's missing in this is the consultation with the communities, with the parishes. I know you say in point six about supporting parishes that want this, but other sections of this motion impose certain things without consultation, and I think that's vital. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd just like to thank councillor Batho for bringing this motion this evening. I'm not a keen cyclist, but I do like to cycle, and one of the things that most puts me off cycling in the city and around the city is the speed of the cars as they roar past me. I have three boys, they're much bigger than me now, but when they were younger, I used to attempt to cycle with them to school. I used to have one in the front, one behind, one next to me, and I would cycle alongside them. By the time we got to school, I was in a sweat and almost having a nervous break down because of the danger, because of the speeding cars. So I would very much welcome the reduction, so I can feel safe to cycle rather than to drive. I also like to walk around the city, but often in the city, we don't have as many crossings as I might like. The Worthy Lane and Worthy Road is one particular area where we've been campaigning for many years for a crossing, and the reason is that trying to get across that road when cars are speeding along it is very difficult. If they were doing 20 miles an hour, it would be easier to cross. And I know that councillor Becker often speaks about, it's okay for me, I'm crossing on my own usually, but if you're crossing with a buggy and a child in hand, it's even more difficult. So there are additional benefits. The other reason why I support this motion is with the development of the sat nav, lots of people will use their sat nav to circumvent the traffic on the arterial roads, which is where the traffic is meant to be. Now, I live in a parallel street next to the Stockbridge Road, which is one of the main arteries into the city. On my street, I have three schools, well, it used to be three, but it's got, oh, and a through school, and also a second primary school. What happens is people will speed up and down my road to try and circumvent the traffic on the Stockbridge Road, just because they're following their sat nav, not being vigilant of all of the dangers to the people on those roads. I think if my road had a 20 mile an hour speed limit, it wouldn't solve the problem, but it would certainly help. I know that there's also confusion often, where people will say to me, well, I don't know, am I in a 20 mile an hour zone at the moment, or am I in a 30 mile an hour zone? So when I challenge them, that they were speeding through town, if I recognised their car, they'll say to me, oh, well, I just didn't know, because I'm used to doing 30. So what I would like, and the reason I support this, is for 20 to be the norm, and higher speeds in residential streets where they're built up, where people are playing, where they're working, where they're walking, where they're cycling, for 20 to be the norm, and higher speeds to be the exception. So I'm very happy to support this motion, and I thank you, councillor Batho, for bringing it today.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I also thank councillor Batho for bringing this motion. I'm a resident in the inner-city suburbs of Winchester, and I regularly walk within the city, and even locations on the far side of this lovely city are within 20 minutes for me to walk to. But there are many obstacles and dangers as I cross this city. Crossing of the roads, as we've already heard from a couple of members, in many cases, I get what crossings, they're not there. The state of the pavements, and they're uneven, they're cluttered, and potentially, as we've seen this week with a few planning applications, becoming more cluttered. Unpleasant routes on the main arterial roads, which are awful to walk down and impossible to cycle upon, and not least of all, the speed of the vehicles, as had already been mentioned by a few members. This city is designed for cars, and is deterring people from cycling or walking within the city, and is encouraging further use of the car, this has to stop. We do have a 20 mile an hour limit in the central area of the city, but when the traffic is not at a standstill, and there are times, believe me, the 20 mile an hour limit is not necessarily observed, and it's certainly not enforced. There are specific hotspot areas, such as the downhill stretch on Romsey Road, if you know the city, where it crosses the railway bridge there, it is positively dangerous, and there is still currently no suitable crossing at that point, despite lobbying by members of this council and residents for many, many years. And there are many other such examples in the city. The solution to taking back control, if I may steal that phrase, of the city from the car is not simply to lower the speed limits, and it needs the deliverables and the work from activities such as the Winchester Movement, the Winchester Movement Strategy, the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan, and other actions to significantly reduce the volume of traffic within the city. But a lower speed limit is a step in the right direction. We need to change the mindset in this city, that in this city, the car is not king. We need the mindset that people are the priority, and we need to encourage a significantly higher percentage of journeys in our city to be made without using a car. I believe a consistent lower speed limit across our city will be a step in the right direction to deliver a more pleasant, safer, and lower-carbon footprint environment for all our residents, workers, and visitors. I will be supporting the motion, and again, I thank you, councillor Batho, for bringing this.
Councillor Westwood. Councillor Power.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm very keen, I really want to support this motion. However, I do have a problem with clause four. I represent seven parishes, and all of my, six of my seven parishes consulted residents about the 20 mile an hour limit, and those parishes were not in favour, and they talked to their residents. I wonder if you could consider removing clause four, so it is slightly less dictatorial, because it says, make 20 miles an hour speed limit the default in places where people live, work, shop, play, or learn. By schools, yes, I can see that. Play, yes, by sports grounds, by open spaces. But to actually impose that on communities where they have undertaken some consultation, I believe this is not the right time, I'm sorry to say. We persuade residents by example. If we could implement a 20 mile an hour limit near all play areas, near all open space, near all schools, I would be very happy to support this motion. But that clause four is a little bit totalitarian for my needs and does not represent the parishes that I represent. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Power. Councillor Weston, thank you.
Any thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. It's a bit of a mouthful, that, isn't it, Madam Deputy Mayor? Well, speeding was one of the reasons why I became a councillor. I campaigned very heavily for speeding, and actually got village 30 in our village of Newtown and in Swanmore. And I was a portfolio holder that actually was on watch when we had 20 mile hours introduced into Winchester. But I will support this motion, because I will support any motion on speeding, but it does, for me, it doesn't cover enough for the rural areas. You know, rural areas don't want the street furniture, we don't want the pavements, we don't want the chicanes, we can't have that because of the tractors, but we have the most, as councillor Bolton said, the most terrible, terrible speeding that goes on in our villages. Our villages, we set up a speed watch team, and that was great, until we all got abused, and, you know, we'd get white van man out there ready to hit us. And, you know, a bunch of us girls, we just said, bugger it, we can't do this anymore. You know, it's our health, it's at risk, somebody could pull a knife out on us. And we'd phone the police up, and we'd get no support. So, you know, as a community, we did quite a lot. We've got the parish council to have SIDS in place now, and they, going around the village, and we're getting more signs, they are work, 30% of the time, they work really quite well. But there are guys that don't give a damn about it, they're just speed through it, you know, so, and, I mean, on the data, I did the data analysis of the speeds SIDS we had in our village this, had for the year, we've got 70 miles an hour going down on a 30 mile an hour road, yeah? What we need is enforcement, we need the police out there, we need to get the police fining them. 20 mile hours, I will support it, but we need to actually get more enforcement, we need the people, and it needs to hit the people's pockets. And until we do that, we're not going to sort the problem out, and the same with the city. So we need to be campaigning with our police commissioners and the police, saying, we need more enforcement, and that will only, that's the only way it's going to work. But I will support your motion, because I will always support something on speeding, because that's one of my bugbears. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Weston. Councillor Loney, we have seven minutes about...
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As councillor Ferguson said, perception of danger is the biggest issue stopping people from using active travel modes. I once did a survey at the local school with year four and five schoolchildren about what they wanted changed in the local park. Their response was that the park was fine, but if only we could do something about the road so it was safe enough for them to go there. And that's a really sad position for our children to be in. The default in much of your... The default in much of Europe is already thirty kilometres an hour in built up areas, and because it's a default, people know and obey the limit. That's why it's important that we have an understanding of what the limit should be in particular areas. Mrs Thatcher banned thirty mile repeaters in our towns, because of course motorists knew how fast they should be going in these areas. Like councillor Weston, I don't want lots of money spent on, you know, traffic calming and street furniture. I want us to have a clear limit where motorists know when they should be doing twenty miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lerni. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I am very happy to support the motion, and I'd like to echo the comments made by my fellow ward councillor, councillor Westwood, and also those from councillor Ferguson, who happens to live in, in my ward. Whenever we have done, councillor Bolton talked about what's lacking in the motion is consultation. Now, the Liberal Democrats in the city have constantly run questions about, would you like to see twenty miles per hour in your road or in your neighbourhood? And we've always had the resounding response, which has been, yes, please, when can you deliver it? And of course, it's been our real regret that it's not been the city council who are able to just say, yes, we're going to have twenty miles per hour in those areas. It falls to the counties, the highways authority. And so far, you know, we, we, our, our support for it sort of has fallen on deaf ears. So really happy that we should be supporting the motion today. I just want to make another comment about, we have a road in, in my ward, Chilbolton Avenue, which currently is forty miles per hour, and the residents there, because as everybody knows, and certainly those who sit on planning committee, it has become far more residential than it ever was, going back, say, twenty years or so. And they would love to have the speed reduced there. So anything that can support a reduction in speed limits for, for communities that want it, I thoroughly support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Isaac.
Thank you, deputy madam mayor. I'd like to support my colleague councillor Bolton, but also councillor Power. Within our area, and I'm sure we all agree, that, you know, as we've been campaigning and supporting residents, they passionately feel that, you know, they want to input how they feel about their community. And I absolutely strongly reserve the right for parishes to decide on how and consult with their residents how they want their community to feel and, and live in with that feeling in mind. They've fed back consultation to Hampshire County Council, they're part of that process. And I don't feel that clause four reflects that. And I'm asking if the council would consider bringing this back, having reviewed it and perhaps amend clause four. I think it's a worthwhile support, I don't want to feel that we're not supporting it, but I can't stand by clause four at this point, but want some perhaps resolution unless councillor Power would like to propose an amendment.
Thank you councillor Isaac. I've got two minutes just, but I'm going to continue with this debate first, thank you. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I can't speak, I don't pretend to speak for rural parishes. I've never lived in the countryside in my life, I'm afraid. I'd like to try one day. But I do know that there's strong demand in my city centre ward for low traffic neighbourhoods and slower speeds. People know that for short journeys in urban areas, rushing in your car saves you seconds. It's just not an effective use of time apart from anything else. But of course, it's complex. Putting up signs is the easy bit and not always very effective, as anyone who's spent two minutes on North Walls will, will understand. So I'm really hoping that Hampshire County Council's mini Holland bid will be successful, so that we can begin to rethink the feel and the purpose of neighbourhood streets. They're about so much more, they can or could be about so much more than just getting from A to B. Councillor Ferguson mentioned the need for consistency. I had a moment of realisation, driving a year or two ago in a London borough where I hadn't been for some time. As I came in to the borough, I saw the signs saying, twenty is the default. And almost everybody was obeying the rules, because they knew what they had to do. They weren't looking out all the time to see, is it still twenty, will it change and I go around the corner? They knew it wouldn't. And that's why I'm strongly supportive of this initiative, this motion. And I think that we need to go for a big picture solution, because the hyper local ones are not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. Now, I have five more councillors with twenty nine seconds, and when we reach the end, that's it, apart from councillor Gordon Smith, who is the seconder, so I would allow him. So councillor, councillor Todd.
On a point of well order, madam mayor.
All right, carry on.
I move to suspend the twenty minute limit, so that we can hear the other five speeches.
Thank you. Yes, okay, so I take couns-
Can I take a vote?
Yeah, sorry. Can I take a vote on that to continue whilst we hear the next five councillors? Do you agree, ladies and gentlemen? Yeah, I think so. Yeah, thank you, that's agreed. So councillor Cook, thank you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. Well, I stand before you today, I'll try and keep this short and sweet. I am a massive fan of Speedwatch, I'm regularly working alongside councillor Batho and councillor Bronk in Twyford and Colden Common with an ex-councillor and an ex-mayor, in fact, councillor Richard Isard. My concern about this motion, okay, is the clause four, which has been brought to our attention today from councillor Power, councillor Bolton and councillor Isaac. So I, I would be saying here now, it can't be a blanket twenty is plenty, it needs to be specific, the parishes need to be consulted, and I'm all for it. And there's lots of other speed limits that need to be looked at. So Hampshire County Council, if you're listening to us speaking here in this chamber, please listen to us. You need to slow speeds down, because that will give us cycle ways, but currently, Twyford can't have, so we're being told, because it's a national speed limit. Take it down to forty and we could. But we're not debating that today, we're debating twenty is plenty, and I would be for the motion, but I would like to speak about the point four. Thank you very much, madam.
Thank you councillor Cook. Councillor Cromerson.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I wasn't, I wasn't expecting to speak, actually. So I, I'm pretty sure I will support this, this motion. However, I have some reservations, as discussed by councillor Bolton. I think the first thing to point out is the motion relates to policy for the whole of the district, not just for the city. I think, you know, although I don't live in the city, I do come in and out very frequently, and within the city, I feel it's very compatible with this twenty being the default in most, most places. Outside the city, I would like the areas that should be twenty to be twenty, but I don't, you know, I don't want us to be dictating that twenty is for everywhere. If I give an example, Springvale Road is currently thirty. There was a long campaign to reduce it to thirty from forty, and many in the community will still dispute that that was the right thing to do. I, I certainly agree with it, that it is the right thing to, to have got to. The parish SIDS, which are the devices which record speeds, would indicate that there are still quite a few people who really disagree with that policy. And I think the point that councillor Bolton made and others have made is that there should be consultation and, you know, choose the right places for twenty to be, for twenty to be the default speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Todd.
Thank you very much indeed, madam deputy mayor. I wasn't going to speak on this, because as I explained in my, my declaration of interest at the beginning of the meeting, I'm actually on the committee that will be reviewing the twenty mile an hour policy, although the, the final decision is made by a cabinet member, so I'm not in a position to influence that. But I have been part of Hampshire County Council's study group on the entire area, and I would like to just make a few comments, which, and also refer to what, what I'm being asked to in, in recommendation five. I see some slight frowns over there, I have checked where this fits in terms of declaration of interest and ability to speak and debate. The, the first thought would be, I think this motion as written is very clear about the importance of views of parish councils and deciding whether twenty miles an hour is given in priority or not in clause three. Secondly, the concept of twenty by default is incredibly important in terms of making limits work. Now, I think it was, if you look at, for example, what's happened in Portsmouth, if you look at what's happening in Wales, if you look at what's happening in the Scottish Borders, the policy there is to say, it will be twenty miles an hour, where, as it explains here, there is a, a mix between vulnerable road users and the car, unless there's a reason not to. And, and that would normally be engineering based reasons, but clearly if there is democratic opposition, there's no intention, and it is not the intention of this motion, that it be forced through where people don't want it. But if we are actually going to make change, it has to become normal that if you're in a built up area, it's twenty miles an hour. And that is the way that we will get change, that is the way that we will get all the benefits that will, that, that was talked about by councillor Batho in his comments at the beginning. The, the way these debates are meant to work is that they are meant to be, the comments that are made are taken on board and reflected in what happens next within the council. We are now quite short of time. The Policy Review Group meets on Monday, so we have two days in order to send this letter in if we are going to say anything. And the decision by the cabinet member will come probably, I think, in March, since it's not in his January paper. But what I will commit, working on the principle of what stands behind the motion, is I will ensure that any letter does take into account the points and concerns that have been raised about the importance of democratic consent, that will feature in, in anything that, that gets sent in by this council. But the basic principle of twenty miles an hour by default is an important one, and one that I would hope that we do see within the motion.
Thank you councillor Todd. I have councillor Cutler, councillor Porter and councillor Horrell, then I will take councillor Gordon Smith, and that will be the finish of debates, so councillor Cutler.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I will be brief, but will support the position that councillor Todd had, and as a, as a rural member. My experience so far is that Hampshire County Council do not listen to the democratic views of, of parishes in terms of extending a speed limit, because it's what's required in those villages. So I'd much prefer us to be in the default position where we have to argue for it to be higher, where they might listen, than the other way around, which at the moment, they will never listen. So I will be supporting this motion on that basis.
Thank you. Councillor Porter.
Thank you, I'll try and make mine as quick as that. Thank you, madam mayor, deputy mayor. I am very conscious that many people say there's no point having twenty here, because nobody will do it, and nobody will enforce it, and nobody will trust it. So that's why a lot of people say we don't want twenty, because they don't think it's possible, really. They don't think that car drivers will drive at twenty, they don't think that the white van man will drive at twenty. They're pretty, probably, pretty right. But actually, if we have enough people driving at twenty because they believe in that actual speed limit, and it is the default, then why should rural people not be given the same advantages that we're offering here to people in the south, in the towns? We, as rural councillors, often think, well, it's not going to happen around our area, so people don't have that confidence that it could happen. So actually, offering the default with, actually, as the lines, and I've just lost it, because it's gone off my screen, thank you, where full consider, leaving thirty, where full consideration of the needs of vulnerable road users allows a higher limit, I think does cover exactly what we want. Because we should be trying to give all of our residents the same safety on the roads when they wish to walk or cycle, wherever they live in the district. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Porter. Councillor Horrell.
Madam deputy mayor, thank you for letting me come in on the end of this debate. And it's a very difficult one, because I think if you asked all of us, would we be happy with number one, express our support for the twenty plenty campaign, we would all say yes. However, I'm not sure that we should be in the business of telling our communities, and we've discussed tonight, the importance of hearing representative views about what is right for them. I represent a village where they did put twenty in, and they regret it, they don't want it, they want it changed, they want it amended, because it doesn't work in the way that they wanted. And so I think that consultation, that discussion with communities, be it a town council, a parish council, is absolutely crucial. And understanding the technicalities from the highways team at Hampshire, who obviously deliver this, and also the needs and views of our residents is crucial. So do we accept the principle? We absolutely do. Is speed hugely a campaigning issue for many of us, not just twenty, it's forty or fifty, wherever we are in our district. However, it should be done in consultation with the people who live, work, play there, that's their community, and we should be taking on board their views, not just telling them that's what they're to receive. So part of this is hugely important, I'd love to support, but the totality of it and the way it's dictating means that some of us won't be able to give it our wholehearted support, which is a shame this evening, madam deputy mayor. And I hope that maybe we can work to try and common, find common ground that we could all rally behind in the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Horrell. I'll now come to councillor Gordon Smith, he's second, if you would like to have your, exercise your right to speak, sir.
Thank you very much, madam deputy mayor. Over the last hundred years, people have become used to being squeezed by cars. The, the space allocated to them reduces, roads get widened, pavements narrowed, cyclists pushed to the verges. And I feel that the twenty mile an hour idea goes some way to redress the balance. Of course, there's a curious thing with, with people, we're all both car drivers and pedestrians, and there's a sort of dichotomy there. You know, one minute we're in our car and we're saying, get out of the way, and I'm the king of the road. And then, of course, you step out and you're trying to cross the road, and you're saying, actually, cars, what are they all doing here? And I think you, you get this with the debate about this on the doorstep. But I do get a pretty constant, if I ask people what they feel in, their main problems are in Ausford and in the parishes, traffic speed comes up every time. Whether or not the twenty mile an hour is, is a sort of universal solution, I'm not quite sure. But generally, in the past, when there's been pedestrianisation projects and roads have been closed- been closed, there's generally a huge outcry about it. But once it's happened, people have got used to it, the general thing is, why didn't we do it before? And I think that might very well happen with the twenty mile an hour. I think we, I'm, people, if they cast their mind back to, say, the late nineteen sixties when they brought in drink driving, and there was a lot of complaints about that and limits on freedom and so on. And people would, even when the laws were brought in, would be boasting, I had eight pints and I was breathalyzed, nothing happened. I don't think you'd get that sort of conversation these days. People are a lot more responsible and a lot more conscientious. So I would say it is possible to change people's ideas and make it the accepted way of behaving. So I'm going to support this, and I, I think it's a great motion, and I see it as a step forward. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Gordon Smith. So I'll now close the debate of councillor Batho's motion, but I would like to ask him to exercise his right to reply to the debate if you would like to, councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I'd just like to respond and say that, like councillor Cook, I'm a member of the Speedwatch group here in Winchester. And thank you to councillor Weston for supporting that scheme in her neighbourhood. I agree that often on the occasions when we have motorists actually stopping, they will ask what the speed limit is. One of the issues that they have is that they don't know exactly what the speed limit is. And the idea that councillor Ferguson was suggesting in terms of actually having a common speed limit across the whole of the district, well, not the whole of the district, the whole of the city, and the conditions on this motion are where it is people are working, playing and, and, and learning. So it actually condition, those conditions would actually allow it to be put into the places where cars come into contact or into the same vicinity as pedestrians. And this is very much a health and safety issue. It's actually about the health and safety of not the motorists, but the mo- but the actual pedestrians, who they are, in many cases, inhibiting from actually doing what they want to do, which is actually travel freely on the pavements. People are scared because of the speed and, in many cases, the size of vehicles that go past them. One of the things I've noticed again on Speedwatch is the size of vehicles, not just the large articulated lorries, but our own personal vehicles. Large vehicles, SUVs, which are now going past people on very narrow pavements. So we have to reduce that concern that pedestrians have and allow them to actually be able to actively travel and actually be able to use those pavements and increase the amount of time that they are actually walking, which actually will give those health benefits. Health and safety, if we think in the past, councillor Gordon Smith was mentioning about drink driving, when you go back home from this meeting, you'll undoubtedly get into your car, if you've driven, and put on a seatbelt. Thirty or forty years ago, you wouldn't have been required to do that. So there are decisions taken on the health and safety benefits that are for the wider community that aren't about personal interests. And what I'm asking for this motion to give is us to ask for Hampshire County Council to actually put in a default twenty mile an hour limit, so that it actually will give our residents and our pedestrians the support and the actual protection that they should require, that they, they need, so that they can actually travel and walk actively in those places that they work, live, educate and play. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Batho. Well, members, I'm now going to put councillor's motion to the vote. So please, may I ask you for a show of hands? All those in favour, please? Thank you. That motion is agreed. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item is item eleven, changes to committees. Mr MacArthur, thank you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I've been notified of the following changes to membership of committees. And for the Health and Environment Policy Committee, deputy member councillor Brook is to be replaced by councillor Bolton. For the Audit and Governance Committee, councillor Bronk is to be replaced by councillor Batho. As a full member of the committee, councillor Westwood is to replace councillor Batho as a deputy member. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's just gone eleven, but we're going to item agenda twelve, agenda item twelve, questions from members of the council. And you do all have your copies of the questions and answers which were circulated prior to the meeting and also available on the councillor's website. Just a reminder that our procedure is that only the questionnaire is able to ask one supplementary question and should indicate accordingly. Members, you are reminded that our procedure rules allow a total time occupied by questions and the answers, and the supplementary will not go over the thirty minutes. So I'm going to go straight into question one, councillor Wallace.
No supplementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, uh, question two, councillor Isaacs.
It's a small supplementary question, madam mayor, if I may, oh, deputy mayor, sorry. Can I just confirm for clarity, because I've had some recent emails from residents, that I'm delighted to, to receive the fact that there will be positive outcomes for people within grade two listed buildings. In line with the Historic England National Trust, historical buildings and South Downs National Park, who have already approved replacement windows for double glazed wheel, um, double glazed windows in listed buildings. You talked and discuss, you mentioned the process would be easier. Can I ask how you plan to do this and by when potentially?
Councillor Lonnie.
Uh, thank you for raising this councillor Isaacs. As a cabinet, we are committed to move as quickly as possible to give architects, building contractors and owners of buildings, either listed or in conservation areas, clearer guidance on what they can do to improve the energy efficiency of the property they are dealing with, without running into the planning challenges that so many of us see. While the question covers windows specifically, this is actually a much wider issue around how the council makes it easier for all our residents to retrofit their homes. Historic England advises that rather than focusing entirely on windows, it's better to consider energy conservation measures that address the thermal efficiency of the whole of the building. And indeed, indeed, this has potentially much larger carbon reduction impacts. Councillors Porter, Ferguson and I have been actively looking at this, and we've attended conferences, looked at some of the policies applied by other councils with many listed buildings and conservation areas, and talked to contractors who've been working in the field. In the Winchester district, we have a particularly eclectic mix of protected properties. Unfortunately, we're not a London borough with similar typologies of houses through different areas. And this does mean that policies do have to be carefully designed and written. I would recommend actually that all members read the Architects Climate Action Network Climate Emergency Conservation Area Toolkit, which was published just six weeks ago, which illustrates the range of considerations that need to be taken into account and the detail a good policy will need to cover. While I can't commit to timescales at the moment, as I say, it's a complicated matter, and we do want to get this right and give clear guidance to all of our residents. We do want to bring this forward as quickly as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, councillor Rutter.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I do have a short supplementary. Assuming the bus, electric bus trial is a success, and I'm sure we all hope that it will be, can we commit to introducing electric buses across our whole area of influence, specifically all the park and rides, but also encouraging all the other private bus companies to do the same? And specifically and urgently, a new electric bus service for our new community at Kings Barton and the new park and ride light that should be shortly, hopefully, built there. Thank you.
Councillor Lonnie.
Uh, thank you. As a district council, clearly we have limited scope in this matter. Certainly, we're keen to push for zero carbon buses. I can see councillor Laming looking at me now about electric buses, because certainly hydrogen has a lot of potential in this area too. We're looking at sources of funding. Hampshire County Council recently, together with Portsmouth, put forward a successful bid for Zebra Funding to create a, an electric bus fleet down in Portsmouth and going into Fairham. And we're certainly keen to see that happen in our area. And it's pretty obvious that short journeys like Kings Barton are obvious places to start with electric bus routes. But we still need to think about the infrastructure and what's going to be right in term, in terms of across the district.
Thank you. Question four, councillor Weston.
Uh, thank you, madam deputy mayor. I do have a little question, and thank you very much, portfolio holder, for your answer. But you hadn't supplied me with what I've actually asked you for. I, I wanted a list of payments to all the, all the areas for St Morrist's Cavern. So I'm, I'm going to ask if you could possibly send that to us, please, or councillors, so we have that information. And I also just wanted to ask you if you, with this street enhancement project, which had an initial budget of sixty k when it first started out, and that was even controversial at the time, if I remember rightly, and that was allocated to it. So can you explain to us how you feel that it's justified that we can spend up to an eventual project cost of two hundred and twenty-five k, another hundred and sixty-five k more on just St Morrist's Cavern?
Councillor Thompson.
Um, thank you very much councillor Weston for your, your supplementary. The initial, as I'm sure you can remember, because I know at the time you were the cabinet member responsible when we started this project, the original budget or the original tender came in way over our budget at something like just over half a million pounds, I believe. And so therefore, the, the work on the cove did have to, we had to scale it down. And I know you were aware of that. The, obviously, including in, in that was the, the provision of the mural. And I think that's been really well regarded now that it's actually up there. Obviously, St Morrist's Cavern is a, a historic passageway off the High Street, and we were really clear that we wanted the project to go ahead, not only to enhance that area. And I think the works that have been carried out definitely do enhance that area. It was really in need of refurbishment. They took longer than we had, we would have liked. But actually, I think, I think we, we now have a really nice walkway through there, when the flower seller isn't completely covering up the mural with all his wares. And yes, I can certainly look into the, the payments that you've asked for. Okay? Thank you very much.
Question five, councillor Brook.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. Yes, I do have a, a follow-up. Thank you, portfolio holder, for your answer. I note that all of the grants, the, the three grants that you mentioned that we've given out, uh, are, sorry, the two that we've given out plus the one that's forthcoming, they're all in built-up areas. But I also note that there's a lot of warm spaces across the district that we haven't supported. I wondered, have we offered to support them? And can I ask that we write to the parish councils to remind them that this grant funding is available? Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
Um, thank you councillor Brook, both for the question and for your supplementary. We did, as part of the cost of living, part, you know, getting the information out about the package of measures, we did actually ask all parish councils to come together. And in fact, in councillor's Evans' response to her question on the cost of living package of measures, we explained that we had a parish connect, we call them, and we give all parish councils the opportunity to come and learn about what we're doing. And that was very much about promoting the grant fund to them for a range of, range of measures. We also then wrote to them afterwards, and we also sent out the slides and the presentation to all of those parish councils. I think that since then, the team have done a follow-up about what's available. And I know when we had the cost of living summer, the key thing for many people was they didn't necessarily want grants for their warm hub. What they were talking about was potentially needing grants to organise transport to get the people from their homes into their warm hubs, particularly in rural areas where there isn't a bus. We've had a discussion about active transport and can you get on the bus, you know, that, that is an issue. So, but very much, if, if an organisation approaches us, that grant fund is there for them. And it isn't, it is across the district, and we're working very hard. And in fact, in the Democratic Services Bulletin, we have again promoted it to members, and we've asked members to make sure that their parish councils know, or their community groups know, or charities know that this grant fund is available. And it could be for warm hub, but it could be to actually get people to that warm hub as appropriate. And the other thing I only wanted to mention as well is we're also looking at a scheme, again, for feedback, and we know it's worked elsewhere, about whether or not what we need to do is provide warm packs. So for some residents, actually going to the hub, they lose too much heat getting there, even if they get, have the transport to get them there. So it may be that we want to look at a scheme, working alongside a partner, where we would, you know, have these warm packs, we would send them something so they can heat themselves in their home. So, you know, hot water bottles, blankets, slow cookers, keep themselves warm, et cetera. Thank you councillor Brook.
Thank you. Question six, councillor Edwards.
Uh, thank you, madam deputy mayor. I think that with the very full answer given by councillor Porter to the public question this evening, we've pretty much done this for tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Warwick isn't with us at present, so I'm moving on to question eight, councillor Reach. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, madam deputy mayor. Similarly, I thank the leader for his full answer. I don't think there's any need for a supplementary.
Thank you. Question nine, councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I do have a supplementary for the portfolio holder. I'm sure that Littleton and Hurstock Parish Council and residents will be pleased that at least someone has heard from the absentee defence infrastructure organisation since last March. This non-consultation is now an embarrassment to the DIO and by unfortunate association to this very council. However, can the portfolio holder advise the council meeting tonight that officers who have briefly discussed the master plan with the DIO are including the important elements listed in my question and are actively seeking to protect and the separate character and identity of the village of Littleton, defending the integrity of the designated settlement gap outside the security fence, and protecting the open spaces and wildlife habitat of the Northern Fields and the Green Belt boundary?
Thank you. councillor Porter.
Thank you very much. And councillor Cunningham and I have talked about this, and I know that our officers have reminded the DIO of their responsibilities and requirement to consult with residents and councillors at parish, city and cabinet level. We look forward to hearing from them in the near future. And meanwhile, we, as a city council, have, have arranged for some master plan training for all of you as city councillors to take part next- all of you as city councillors to take part next week, I think it is, so that we are readily prepared to have the conversations that you are so actively seeking, and I can say, and so am I.
Thank you. Question ten, councillor Evans.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I do have a supplementary. I thank you very much to the deputy leader and cabinet member for community and housing for her very comprehensive answer, and it's great to learn just how much progress has been made since the cost of living package of measures was put in place just four months ago. But I think that these messages, these measures were initially set as an emergency, short-term response to the immediate crisis, and it was envisaged that they would come to end at the end of April. Given the cost of living crisis looks set to carry on for some time, can I therefore ask whether this programme is likely to be extended?
Councillor Ferguson.
Oh, sorry. Green? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you councillor Evans, both for your, for your question and for your supplementary. When we talked about the council plan earlier today, we talked about the four corporate priorities, and the first corporate priority that we identified was the ongoing support for our residents and our businesses who are particularly suffering from the cost of living crisis. And I agree, this isn't a short-term phase that we are going through, and that the need will continue. In fact, talking to citizens' advice, they, they say very clearly that often there's a lag in impact on individuals, and we heard very clearly from councillor Scott earlier about the amount of suffering that there is actually amongst our most vulnerable residents. So it is going to be a corporate priority, but the work that the package of measures introduced, first of all, the grant programme, some of those grant funds, the work those community groups are doing, they will be ongoing beyond April. The cost of living summit led to the relaunch of the Social Inclusion Forum. That happened for the first time today, and I'm delighted that councillor Horrell and councillor Brooke were involved in that too. That is an ongoing group that's going to come together to do just that, to look at how we support those who are most vulnerable in our communities, how do we have that social inclusion, how do we work together to make that happen? And today was just the first meeting of that, and there was a lot of energy in the room for that. The work that we are doing around supporting people to reduce their energy bills, and we do know that in the cost of living, for many people, the two biggest issues are both their energy bill, you know, the huge increase in energy prices and their energy costs, and also around food. So the work we're doing with residents, particularly our own council tenants, around our retrofit ready programme, that will be ongoing and that will have long-lasting effects, because the more that we can thermally insulate their homes, yes, it reduces their carbon, but critically, if we make their homes warmer, they lose less heat, then they'll have to pay less for their heating. So that work is ongoing, and in fact, of the 1,400 residents that we wrote to in our worst-performing council homes, we had 806 respond to say, yes, please, I would like to be part of this programme. So that will be ongoing. And also for our residents who are on very low incomes in the private sector, there are a number of initiatives which councillors signed up to, to allow them also to gain access to funding to make retrofit measures to make their homes warmer, to make them more energy efficient. Obviously, we set up the website, that has a huge amount of information on it, that won't go away from April. And also, we talked about within our teams and our officers' team, who we have to thank, who've responded really well to the crisis and the amount of work that's gone on, and it is actually a credit to them that we've achieved so much in that four-month period. But the teams themselves are looking at how we offer that support. So again, for our own tenants, we have the welfare support fund, which will come forward in the HRA budget again, but we also have that tenancy or tenure sustainment within our private housing sector team. Also, a group that we haven't talked about is those who've come to make their homes in our district, both our Ukrainian guests and also Syrian Afghan refugees. They're also a vulnerable group, and the work we do with them to help them integrate and how to support them to become independent, that's all ongoing. So it may not come under that cost of living banner, but it's all connected. Having said that, it is something that we are looking at and we will be looking at as we bring forward budget options as we go forward to see what, if there's anything more specific we need to do. But thank you for the supplementary.
Thank you. Question eleven, councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thank you to the leader for his answer. I do have a supplementary, and that is that, does the leader think a million pounds is an acceptable spend in the current economic climate on consultants and finance and com support when we are so strapped for cash and we're charging our residents huge increases in fees and the like? I'm conscious that money is tight, and I'm surprised at this level of spend. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Leader.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thank you councillor Horrell for your question. In a way, I'm quite surprised that you're surprised at this level of spending, because the amount spent on consultants in 2018-19, the last 12 months of your leadership of this council, was also one million pounds. And I'm sure there were reasons for that level of spend at that time, which you would be happy to take the room through if the format of this particular debate allowed it. But like her, I do recognise that times have changed and that we do need to be careful with funding, and we can't all be as lavish as those halcyon days of the last 12 months of the Conservative administration, when a million pounds went out of the door on consultants for reasons that we don't have full details of. I have tasked officers as part of our saving plans into the future, and it's something that our newly-appointed monitoring officer will be looking at. For example, is how we can be more efficient, because as outlined in the question, a lot of the things we put into the category of consultants are things that are really unavoidable for us to, to spend as a council as part of doing business. They're skills that we don't necessarily have in-house, and they're skills that we need temporarily in order to drive ahead particular projects, but that we, and we can't afford to have as a sort of continuous member of staff. The days, for example, of when councils had their own architects' department are over. If we use an architect on something that isn't within the HRA, then that counts as consultancy spending. If we need to do geoarchaeology or hydrological work, then that counts as consultancy spending. If we're doing quantity surveying, and there's a range of other areas where we may need external advice and it's appropriate to have that external advice, then that counts as consultancy. But that said, every area of this council needs careful scrutiny. And as mentioned, as I hinted at earlier, I have tasked officers at looking across this spending and seeing if there are ways we can do things differently, costs that we can avoid in order to reduce this, but I make no apology that in those circumstances, where, where external advice is needed and is essential to, for example, help with Central Winchester Regeneration or other similar projects, that we will seek that outside advice. But I am happy to confirm that it would be my intent to reduce the level of consultancy spending below the level spent by the Conservatives when they were in control of the council.
Thank you. Question 12, councillor Westwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Can I thank the cabinet member for the answer on plastics recycling, and I'm pleased to hear that a new recycling plant is planned to be available, will increase the range of plastics recycled in Hampshire. However, the new Hampshire plant won't be available till 2025 at the earliest, and there's a real desire from residents across our district to increase the range of items that we recycle. Is there anything we in Winchester can do to accelerate progress in this area?
Councillor Loney.
Thank you for your question, councillor Westwood. We are looking at whether we can expand to a minor degree the materials that are recycled. For example, we've been looking at coffee capsules, which can be collected alongside some of the other things that we collect. The big issue with plastics has been that there just isn't the market out there, and that it is just too difficult to collect a lot of them. We have a commitment within Project Integra that we will not collect items that we cannot recycle. So whereas some other authorities kind of promise their residents recycling, what in fact is happening is that a lot of it is still ending up in the incinerator, and it's really important that we avoid that. I have been having discussions with this with other cabinet members across the district and Portsmouth as well around whether there is more that we could be doing in this area, but the infrastructure unfortunately is lacking nationwide, and I think we really need to push on government action to ensure that all local authorities are able to collect and actually recycle the plastics they're going to require us to be picking up at the curbside in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Question 13, councillor Goldfrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm grateful for the response to my original question. I, I'm concerned that the large number of homes allocated to the South Downs National Park area, 500, if they aren't delivered, and the Park Authority only committed at the last local plan to, I think it was 113 throughout the planned period, although that was a shorter planned period. If they don't deliver 500 homes, then I fear they're going to be allocated to a rural area within our district to ensure that we have sufficient numbers. So I am very nervous about the figures given in the reply for two reasons. One, the estimated of 14 properties being delivered each year in the park area is over a 20-year period. Well, there's only 16 years left in this planned period, so that's 50-odd buildings which have still got to be found. And there's an assumption that 219 homes have already been built or given planning permission in the last three years, which seems an enormous amount, and if that were the case, then we wouldn't have a problem, and 500 would be an underestimate of what we're going to get delivered. I asked in my original question what confidence the portfolio holder had in the delivery of these. Given the seemingly erratic nature of the sums in her response, could you tell me how much confidence you really have in the delivery of these 500 homes?
Councillor Porter.
I'm not, oh, I've gone red. Oh, something's happened, sorry. Oh, that's right, okay, okay. More than normal. I can't quite understand why councillor Goldfrey doesn't understand the numbers. We've agreed with the National Park that 219 dwellings were already committed with planning permission in our district, and they are committing to another 280 additional dwellings, that's 499. I agree, it's not 500, it's one less than that, it's 499. However, it's inevitable that their plan is a revision, it's not actually a brand-new local plan. They are absolutely committed to affordable housing, and that's what they're expecting to build in this particular case. We have a duty to cooperate meeting with the local plan team at South Downs National Park, and we believe officers, because our officers and their officers tell the truth to each other, and we believe very much that that is what they're aiming to deliver. I, the confidence is the same as we have with any other developer, actually, when they say they're going to develop something, that they will, if that's the deal that we have got as part of the local plan. So I can't understand why their word should be any less than any other person or any other developer that's coming forward. They are obviously not the developer in this case, but they are definitely the people who are committing to a number of properties in the local plan and agreement to provide, and agreement that they could be built on the National Park. I don't understand why you believe that their statement of common ground and their agreement will be any less valid than any other. Perhaps we can follow that through as the months go on, but, and it's a shame that their local plan isn't coming to fruition at the same time as ours, because originally it was going to be. But all along the area, people will know, if their councillors will know, that we've been talking to the local, to the National Park about the communities that straddle on both sides, and that is a very important part of our local plan for the district, to make sure that we don't just think about the housing in the district, but actually, that we think about the housing within the National Park as well. So I just don't understand why you're not confident in the response back from the South Downs National Park. As, it's only one supplementary question, we'll have to consider, we'll have to continue this at a different time.
Thank you councillor Porter, and councillors, that finishes questions for this evening, and that concludes the formal business also for this evening. But please, may I take this opportunity to say a big thank you to you all and the officers, because this was our first try, if you like, of the council chamber, and I personally think we all did extremely well. So well done, and a safe journey home. And could I now ask officers to end the broadcast? Thank you.